Good evening and welcome on this nice crisp spring day, but sunny and not rainy. I would like to call to order a regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. On behalf of the members of the school board and our acting superintendent, I welcome you, each of you here and those who are watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and the pledge to the flag. Here to do those honors are two students from Demby Early Childhood Center. David Ado Donko. That's correct? And... My first will have David to come forward. Thank you, David, for coming forward. Tell us a little bit about yourself before you begin. And the floor is yours.
I need checkups.
My name is David. And?
It's okay. It's okay.
Say "and" and "I am..."
It's okay.
Don't think we can't do it.
You'll be good.
Yes.
I'll come in with you.
Let's remember. No. Every... I'll read with him.
Good evening. My name is David Ado Donko and I am four years old. I am in Mr. Noel and Miss Mayo class at the Early Childhood Center. At my school, this week, we are celebrating the Week of the Young Child. Learning is most important for kids like me because our brains and bodies learn and grow every day. Please enjoy this poem called "Let Me Play." Let me run. Let...
Let me fly.
Let...
Let me jump.
Jump up...
Up to the sky. Let me dig. Let me touch. This is how I learned so much. Thank you and have a good evening.
McKenna, would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name is McKenna. I'm four years old. Please stand. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, McKenna and David as well. David, that was wonderful. You just took a little time, a little chance to warm up. But once you warm up, you've got it going there. Again, supporting David and McKenna tonight, all their family members and their school family, please stand to be recognized. The board appreciates your encouragement for you to be giving these kids and coming out here to tonight's meeting again. We love you and that's a great job done by both of you. So at this time, we will continue with our agenda in item 1.04, Board Recognitions.
Yes, and we do have quite a few board recognitions tonight. Tonight we'll honor on the national stage with our Magna Award grand prize. We'll honor athletic fields excellence. If you've been out at Todd Stadium, you know exactly why we're getting that honor. And we'll also honor a very special blue ribbon for one of our high schools in the area of music. So, Mr. Hunter, if you'll join me up front.
I have the pleasure of presenting this month's school board recognitions. The National School Board Association's Magna Awards Program historically recognizes school district innovation and student achievement. This year, the awards program focused on equity in education by recognizing school district programs that remove achievement barriers. If you haven't heard our great news, Newport News Public Schools earned the grand prize for our large school divisions for our English as a Second Language program. With over 55 languages represented by more than 1,500 English learners and an increasing number of students with limited or no prior school experience, Newport News Public Schools has made transformative strides to support student learning and acclimate students to the American school environment and culture. To accept this recognition on behalf of the school division is April Vasquez, Supervisor of English as our Second Language Program. Ms. Vasquez, thank you. Newport News Public Schools offers resources for English language learners and their families. New families may begin enrollment, may begin the enrollment process at their school or at the school division's ESL Welcome Center with the support of bilingual staff and interpretation resources. The ESL School and Family Engagement Coach supports families through a Parents as Education Partners Program. And across the school division, the use of phone-based language interpretation services helps remove the communication barrier for families. This service provides 24-hour access to certified interpreters representing more than 170 languages. Newport News Public Schools is highlighted in the April 2018 edition of the American School Board Journal and the school board was honored at the National School Boards Association's Annual Conference in Texas earlier this month. So again, on behalf of all of the hardworking and dedicated employees who help our ESL students every day, thank you and congratulations to both April and the school board. Thank you. And as she makes her way back to her seat, I would like to acknowledge her family members that have joined her this evening. Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. The Fields of Excellence Award Program presented by Pioneer Athletics honors outstanding athletic fields and the hardworking field crews who diligently maintain them. We are very proud that Todd Stadium was selected as one of 91 winners for the Fields of Excellence Awards Program this year. Present this evening are two dedicated employees who ensure that Todd Field is well-maintained and in superior condition to host football, soccer, and a host of other athletic events and contests. Please join me in congratulating Randy Davis, Landscape Supervisor. And Philip Hunter, Grounds and Equipment Manager. As noted by Pioneer Athletics, so much goes into achieving excellence than just raw materials. A field of excellence happens when the efforts of a talented crew, a well-maintained surface, and the best in paint, equipment, and accessories, and whatever else magic you do out there all comes together, as they have at the Todd Field, thanks in part to these two gentlemen. The award is also a nod to this team for their dedication and effort in keeping the fields looking their best. Pictures say it best. As part of the award application, an aerial picture and video of Todd Stadium was submitted, taken by Gabe Odachowski, a Menchville student in the telecommunications program, on the opening day of football season. So we extend our thanks to Gabe and to her supervisor, Ray Price. Gentlemen, congratulations and thank you for your efforts in maintaining our award-winning field. We appreciate it. I'd also like to acknowledge some family members joining them this evening. Would you please stand and be recognized? I'd also like to acknowledge Keith Webb, our Supervisor of Plant Services, Mike Nichols, our Program Administrator as well. Thank you for joining us this evening for this recognition. Each year, the Virginia Music Educators Association recognizes music programs that have earned superior ratings through its assessments. The Blue Ribbon School Award is given to the top-performing schools in the state after reviewing each school's band, chorus, and orchestra. All ensembles must receive a superior rating to qualify for the award. This year, Woodside High School was named a Blue Ribbon School. Accepting this honor this evening are the music educators at Woodside. Please join me in congratulating Brian Austin, Director of Bands, Whitney Ferrier, Assistant Director of Bands, Sheila Downs, Director of Orchestras, and Emilio Pisante, Director of Choral Studies. And I'd also like to acknowledge and welcome to the front Catherine Sheam Smith, our Magnet In order to be considered for the Blue Ribbon Award, the top-performing groups must perform two pieces of approved graded, two pieces approved from a graded music list. Each ensemble at Woodside performed well, of course, earning superior ratings and the opportunity to be named a Blue Ribbon School. So again, congratulations to these music educators and to all of the students at Woodside High School enrolled in the music program. Of course, joining them this evening is their very proud principal, Jonathan Hockman. Would you please stand, Mr. Hockman? That concludes tonight's recognitions. At this time, we'll take about an eight-minute break so that our honorees and their guests may leave if they choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about eight minutes.
Palmer Elementary Art Teacher Courtney Bellinget is utilizing her students' unique artwork to illustrate how young people can transform their community in a positive way. Bellinget is working with each class on a school-wide eye care project by designing and assembling quilts to be donated to the homeless. In all Newport News elementary schools, Eye Care is a youth development initiative interwoven with the daily curriculum to raise awareness about service learning and volunteerism while building leadership, citizenship, and teamwork skills. By making colorful quilts for the homeless as their eye care project, Palmer students are learning a valuable lesson about using their time, skills, and putting forth their best effort for others. Each quilt starts with students designing their own unique stamp, which is repeatedly pressed to complete one square of each grade's quilt. Using gel glue to mask the paint, each grade focused on a specific artistic theme that tied into what they're learning in class. Some grades focused on math themes such as fractions and rotational transformations. Kindergarten students made designs to reinforce their grasp of the alphabet and numbers. Since fifth grade is learning about the parts of a flower, they went with a floral design. While studying Australia, second graders used Aboriginal dot art. And first grade students simply wanted to spread some love with different heart designs. Students even learned how to sew by helping to assemble their squares into a completed quilt. Palmer students are working hard to complete seven quilts for the local Port Homeless Shelter Program, and the students can't wait to hear how their creative gifts of love are received and appreciated. Newsom Park Elementary is giving students the opportunity to build bright futures. During the Math, Science, and Technology Magnet Schools STEM Day, student engineers enjoy building in teams with their hands and on computers. STEM Lead Teacher Jennifer Barker worked with staff and students to gather the necessary materials for each activity. These design challenges were also aligned with grade-level standards, allowing this STEM approach to enhance classroom instruction and reinforce educational concepts. First graders used code.org to learn about block-based programming. This introduction was important since first graders now have the opportunity to code weekly during their intervention and extension block. Second graders made their study of first Americans come alive by building the unique shelters of different tribes. Third through fifth grades worked in teams to design, construct, and test their own roller coaster. And student members of Newsom Park's robotics team were able to continue honing their skills by using Ozobots to explore the rock cycle. Each STEM activity presented its own set of challenges for students to overcome through problem-solving, critical thinking, and creative solutions, providing Newsom Park's students with the necessary skills for academic and life success in the 21st century. Budding engineers from all six Newport News high schools gained firsthand experience with cutting-edge technology and mind-blowing science at this year's annual Engineering Career Days. The event took place at NASA Langley Research Center in partnership with Newport News Shipbuilding, Jefferson Lab, and the Peninsula Engineering Council. High school students from across Hampton Roads were invited to spend a day talking with local engineers and scientists, using state-of-the-art tools and gaining a wealth of knowledge about STEM careers. Professionals from Jefferson Lab, Newport News Shipbuilding, and NASA gave students an in-depth glimpse into their daily tasks and groundbreaking projects. During this interaction, students were encouraged to ask questions and received amazing visual explanations to stoke their career ambitions. With inspiration sky-high, the students put their knowledge to work by participating in an engineering design challenge. Student teams seated with Jefferson Lab built a functioning wind-powered machine to lift objects off the floor. Newport News Shipbuilding let students work together to build floating vessels out of duct tape. And students with NASA designed and built a lunar module capable of making a controlled landing. For students, participation in Engineering Career Days will help transform their hopes Palmer Elementary gave families the opportunity to get fit, eat healthy, and enjoy exercising together. Organized by PE teacher Colin Boykin and family and community engagement specialist Maria Henriquez, the Family Fun and Fitness Night had a variety of activities to keep the whole family moving. 234 families attended the evening event, which offered a number of fun fitness stations for families to experience together. Palmer staff volunteered their time at each activity, offering helpful tips for maximum excitement. Sports, yoga, dance, and climbing were just some of the activities that kept Palmer students and parents on the move. And when families needed a break, cafeteria manager Rochelle Sims provided healthy fruits and vegetables to snack on, while school nurse Jamie Davis offered blood pressure screenings and weight checks for anyone interested. The entire evening was completely free for Palmer families, with funding from the school's PTA and extended learning program. By allowing families to explore a range of physical fitness activities and healthy eating choices, Palmer's families are equipped to make fitness fun every day.
Welcome back and I hope that...
Mr. Chairman, before you move on to the next presentation, I'd like to make a motion that the school board go into a brief closed session so that we can get some legal advice on the superintendent search. So in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A8, I hereby move to enter into a closed session, school board meeting to consult legal counsel regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel, namely issues regarding the school board superintendent search contract with the VSPA.
You heard the motion?
I second.
You heard the second. Time for the question.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out what basis, Mr. Chairman.
For what basis, I think?
Well, I can answer my basis. We have conflicting correspondence from the VSPA which addresses potential legal issues associated with this entire process. To date, none of the board members that I'm aware of have heard from legal counsel in terms of opinions, and I think that before a status report that you're going to offer tonight, we need to hear from legal counsel because this is a personnel matter and it has legal ramifications, and that is my basis. Mr. Chairman, have you informed members of the board as to the current status of our contract?
That is correct. Part of my update, you will get that, Mr. Stodgill, is my update. This is why we do an update first. This is the sole reason why we put it up here, so we can give an update. To go into closed session, I don't think that would be the right thing to do. This is kind of a public deal. We want to be transparent of what we do things.
If I could just clarify, I think, and obviously I'm not stating a substantive position. Mr. Stodgill's asked for, he's made a motion to go into closed session, I believe, for legal advice regarding the contract.
That's correct.
And so I just wanted to make that clear, which is allowed under FOIA.
And, Mr. Chairman, I second it because I know this is just such a significant and important process in which we are traveling through. Just want to make sure that everything's okay. That's my reason and justification.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, you have received legal advice and you were prepared to present that to the board this evening.
That is correct. I'm the Chair of the Board and I'm the conduit between our, the VSPA. I've been in constant contact with them just about every day. I've actually spoke with them today, and so I think it would be no just to let the public hear that about the contract, that'd be before we go into a closed session. And I think that's the only proper thing to do. I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what a closed meeting would do for us right now, when I've got all, I've spoken to our legal, I've spoken to VSPA, and I believe this is the opportune time for us to do this. But anyway, there's a motion on the floor, and so any more questions? There being none, Ms. Tintin, please call a roll.
Okay, and the board is clear on what we're voting for to go in the closed session? Okay. Mr. Ely?
Against.
Mr. Harris?
Against.
Mr. Hunter?
Against.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Ms. Ashby?
Four.
And Mr. Brown?
Against.
The motion fails. Four, four in favor of going into, three in favor of going to closed session, and four against.
So, I will move it on to the particular agenda. Again, prior to this audience in the public comments portion, tonight's agenda, I would like to provide some comments regarding the school board superintendent search, and I believe that's why many of you are here today. As we started this process months ago, this board said that we would be as transparent as possible, and so tonight, what I want to do is do a chronological order of events that has taken place from day one. So, if you bear with me for a quick second, I will grab my notes. Okay, so, on October 17th, we had our regular scheduled meeting, 2017, and after that meeting, a closed session was called, and we do that to give the superintendent's eval. While during that closed session eval, the superintendent informed Dr. Kilgore that she will be retiring, and that not only will she be retiring, she will be retiring at the end of the calendar year, not the school year, and her last day of employment as the superintendent would be December 20th. And so she did, on the 21st, then it was a public announcement made that Dr. Kilgore would have planned on to retire, and that would be in this, in December. So, what will be our next steps? November 3rd, the school board scheduled a special meeting with VSPA, that's the Virginia School Board Association. And at that meeting, the board was given the presentation by VSPA as to how they would assist us in conducting the superintendent's search if they were selected. And so we saw a presentation and things of the sort. After that was over, they left, and the board immediately went into open session, or we still in open session, and we voted, and we voted seven to zero to select VSPA to assist us in this superintendent search. And then following that, a public announcement of the superintendent's search was made to the public. November 14th, a timeline for the superintendent's search was established, and I've got a copy of that here. I was reading real quickly, November 3rd announcement, January 9th, we were supposed to have a public hearing, the 16th, the second public hearing, January 21st, the surveys would go out, actually went out January 3rd to January 21st. January 24th, the board would meet to establish the qualifications. The 24th also provided, we met with the VSPA. The 29th, the applications would be the time that the applications were open, and they were open from January 29th to February 28th. Tentative again, March 12th would be a second meeting with VSPA, which we did hold, and then March and April would be candidate interviews. Announcement for superintendent search was announcement in person possibly in April or May, and then of course, July 1, which is the anticipated time for our new superintendent. So, that was the, that was the schedule. So we're back here on the 14th, the timeline's set. We had a special meeting. We then went into another closed meeting to find out who would be our interim superintendent. So guided by VSPA, they had given us guidelines as to what type, what individual which we should stay away from, what type of individual we should get, and things of that sort. Well, this board elected, self-included, we elected to not heed to their advice, and with a lot of deliberation and things of that sort, Brian, Mr. Nichols, was elected to be our interim superintendent, and I must say he has done a great job since he's been a superintendent. He's been, he's been done a very good job as our selection. So then, December 12th, so we announced Brian at our December 12th meeting. The next year, January, this year, January 12th... The next year, January, this year, January 3rd, public surveys went out to you, to the public, went out internet, and they were out until January 21st. During that public time, we were supposed to have a public hearing, but due to Mother Nature, one of the first hearing was canceled, I think that was January 9th. Then we had, then we had a public hearing right here in this place on January 16th was held, and we heard from many of you. One thing that we heard from many of you was that we wanted to take this per se, I wouldn't say show, but take it on the road, and they wanted, we wanted folks in the North District to have an opportunity to hear from you, and as well as those in the South District. We did, as a board, we decided that was a good thing to do, they would not be kind of a surveys, the surveys was closed, but we would get input, and we would use that input, again, to help us in decision of what qualifications we were looking for in our upcoming superintendent. So, January 24th, that day we had a special meeting with the V S B A, and the qualifications for the application then was the sense of that meeting. That meeting lasted about a couple hours. From the public input, there were required, and there were preferred qualifications, required and preferred. Those required items were to be a principal. One must have worked in the central office, and one must have, must agree once they signed the contract before, must live in our lovely city, this beautiful city of Newport News. And last but not least, that took lots of time, I said about 25 minutes, Ms. Jane from the newspaper told me it took much longer than that. She tells me it takes about 45 minutes, but it was a long discussion, it was an article in the paper, and we debated in detail, well, this candidate have a doctor's degree or not. Well, we came out of it, and after much discussion and much debate, a vote was made five to zero. Two of our board members, even though they were there during the discussion, their businesses called them back to work, and they could not be present. So we, so those qualifications that V S B A took, set this tool and set those standards for those applications. Those applications didn't come to Newport News Public Schools, those applications came to V S B A up in Charlottesville. And so if I called, or someone called and says, "What were the qualifications?", you must meet those four qualifications in order to be even considered, so we say. So that happened. Again, January 29th, and February 4th was, February 1st was the two additional inputs. Applications, we start receiving them, January 29th through February 28th. Now, those applications were received, and I have a little chart here, there were 60 inquiries about the job, 44 full applications were submitted. Eighteen of those applicants were current or former superintendents, 12 were assistant, associate, or deputy superintendents, 10 worked in a central office administration, three were building principals at the administrative level, and one was an other. There are another breakdown, 36 men, eight women, 13 Virginia applicants, and 31 out of the state, how about that? We say we're going to do a national search, we did, okay? They came from Maryland, North Carolina, Florida, Kentucky, Minnesota, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, Georgia, Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, Massachusetts, Michigan, Ohio, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, and Wisconsin. So I think that's a pretty well-rounded of a national search that we've got. So we had very good participation, one being that this school system, I mean, we are wonderful school system to come to, with a 93.4% on-time graduation rate, with a 63% of our kids on free reduced lunch, a 2.2% dropout rate, I mean, it's very favorable for someone to come to our school system, and those are types of candidates, those are the types of candidates that applied, those types of candidates apply. So, then, we got the applications in, and then we set with V S B A on March 12th for another special meeting. That meeting was the time of selecting. I sent an email out to my fellow board members as the chair, told them to come to the meeting with your top five or seven candidates. And so, how this portal works, each one of us got to log in, and we logged into it. And so as those, every day those applications came in, I had to set up my phone, it would just bing at you, you go in there, you look at it. And so we had an opportunity to review the applications, V S B A came in, they did their due diligence, and this is where it's going to, you need to listen to this, they come back in, the applications come to them, what they do is go and check all the references. They check all the references, so, you know, they call the folks up, they call to the school to assure that what those folks put on the applications were pretty much true, okay? And so during this meeting of applicant, application evaluations, we all have favorites, we all have favorites, just because of the selection process. So those who've had like three plus, three of us, three or four of us liked them, they automatically went to like a further discussion. But also, the V S B A at that time gives us input, and I'm telling this, this is talking about this breach, they tell us input. They say, "Wow, this Gary Hunter's a fine person, he's wonderful as a superintendent, but he's kind of hyper, one, and he really doesn't listen to the board that well", right? Or, you could say, "Oh, Gary Hunter's wonderful, but he'll be a good superintendent in a year or two, he's just, this school system is too big for him right now." Those things that they told us was like being in Vegas, what's in Vegas stays in Vegas, that's that confidentiality about the breach, because it's very important that what they tell us about a candidate, that we don't go back and regurgitate that right back to that candidate. Because I know a lot of folks, and like many of us know a lot of folks, and they'll call us, "Mr. Hunter, I see you guys been interviewing, and I didn't get an interview." Here's a breach. "Oh, yeah, you didn't get interviewed, man, because you didn't get enough votes." Or, I could say something like, "They say that you are too young." Okay, just like that, that's all you had to say, "You're too young." That good friend of mine, I didn't realize they was going to pick up the phone and call up V S B A and says, "Why did you tell them I was too young? I graduated from college when I was 16 years old, I got my doctor's degree when I was 32 years old, what the heck do you mean I was too young?" Guess what, that's a breach of confidentiality. That's a breach of confidentiality. Now, let me, let me put you in the state of us, okay? Most school board members are like any one of us, not many of us ever in our life are interviewing people who are going to make $100, $150,000 a year. I could raise a hand right here, and I'll probably get two or three people here in this room that actually interview folks that make $150,000, $150,000 plus, or $200,000 a year. And a lot of us have never interviewed people at all in our jobs, no matter how successful we are. And that's what happens when you take, those folks could be experiencing their jobs, but not necessarily experienced in the interview process. I have, I've interviewed people, I've hired folks making $100,000 a year, but many of folks may not have, and that little telltale is a breach of confidentiality. And so typically, we got this letter, so we went, so let's move on, we interviewed folks. So as you heard in the paper, nine people were selected for interviews. On March 17th and 18th, we interviewed candidates, and then we also interviewed candidates on the 20th of March. We then, on March 20th, I'm open, we then reevaluated those ones that we liked, and then we then selected for who would move on to the next process, and we did that. And again, it does get heated, this is hard, hard business. If we're not actually talking loud about one another's or vying for your people, then we're not doing our jobs. We haven't had a superintendent here in 10 years, and if you're not ready, and this where, this where comes the inexperience of folks who basically sometimes don't understand what it takes for an interview and how important this is. And so it will get heated. I never expected it not to get heated, but that comes with the territory. This is what we do, this is really, really, really serious business, we're about to hire the most important person in this city, they're going to guide our future, they're going to lead our future, and if we're not passionate about the person that you thought was the best, you know, you're not doing your job. And so we did it. We then narrowed it down to, again, the next group of folks, March 26th was on a Monday, we interviewed that all day. But before that, before that, that morning, I'm trying to be transparent, I get a, I get a frightening call, frightening call from V S B A, says, "Gary, you guys breached confidentiality." I'm like, "What?" She says, "Yep, I'm going to have my legal team draft a letter to you." And she did. And that letter then was received by me, I distributed that letter to each one of my board members for their review, and they read it all at that time. I then spoke to her, walked out of the rooms, talked to her, I says, "What do you want from us?" Says, "Gary, what we want from you is to assure that each one of your board will not go back out there with loose lips again." We, you know, Newport News, this is cool, Newport News is the standard of excellence with the V S B A. We do everything right, we typically go to these meetings in numbers, we always show up, we show up on time, we have been an outstanding board for many years for V S B A. And so they took that in consideration because they understand that many folks have never interviewed folks, right? And I said, "What do you want from us?" Says, "Gary, all I need for you is to guarantee by voice." They never called for a letter, they never told me to write a letter, I asked them, I checked with legal, I said, "You sure?", says, "We don't need anything from you." I've been on the phone with the V S B A probably every day since probably, probably since the 26th of March, every day. I may have missed one day, every day, they assured me, "We need nothing in writing, we are grown adults, we have a relationship with you, and that was good enough, and Gary, your word was good enough." So on April 3rd, I actually have an email from the V S B A, I forwarded to the newspaper, and it basically says, "Mr. Hunter, if we haven't received anything from you, as far as we're concerned, the contract and agreement is intact, please proceed, please proceed." So that's what we're doing today, we're proceeding. And then, I'm going to clear up some stuff about you saw in the paper, and I think that people have favorites because we do have favorites. And then I think there was another contention about if individuals have the requirements, like a PhD and things of that sort, why are we, you know, people saying they were arguing about that, why are we even arguing about a requirement? It's required. We don't allow students to walk across the stage if they don't meet all the requirements, period. It's, that's, that's clear, that's crystal clear, and guess what here, as a school board member, we're going to let people through without the requirements? We can't do that. I don't care how great folks are, I don't care how great folks are, we do, as a school board, we can do exactly what we want. We could actually go out and hire, you know, a house father, a dog catcher, we can, I mean, we can break all the rules, and we can. All they have to do is make sure they get certification that they're going to be a superintendent in Virginia, but other than that, we could go and hire anyone we want to. We, it's no qualifications, but we ask you, as I stated before, we ask you to sign our petitions, we ask you then for money to support our campaigns, then by far, we ask you for your votes to get elected up here, and then we turn back around and ask you for your survey inputs. 1,200 surveys, that's the most in the V S B, V S B A history. Boy, you guys really love this city. 1,200, I mean, surveys came in, we took them, and we listened to you, and guess what, we voted on. Fast forward from that particular day, at the next meeting like this here, you always hear me talk about a consent agenda, consent agenda has stuff that we had previous meetings, there's another opportunity when I said, call, you know, there's a motion, some emotions, there's a second, and then there's a time for the question. So if you had a question about a meeting that maybe you were there, maybe you had left, that's your opportunity there, when I call for the question, to ask questions about, hey, I was not there, I didn't realize that we voted five to zero, we didn't vote five to one, or whatever the case may be, but guess what we did? We voted seven to zero. So now, these qualifications have had 12 to zero votes. I don't understand, I've got a degree, I'd have no idea when someone tells me as the chair that qualifications are in question. There can't be, there absolutely can't be. We're not raising students, we don't let students walk across the stage just because they may get something, they have to, they have to have it, they have to have it. And once you do that, once that's all cleared up, we can move this process on. So, let's bring you to where we are today. We've interviewed the candidates, our next step after the last board meeting, I must read an announcement. Basically the announcement says that we're going to go, we want to interview folks, I'll read in a few minutes, that we're going to, that we could read it, that we'll go back and do interviews for another 15 days, right? We don't have to tell you where they are, what time they are, okay? That's where we are. I didn't say that after the last meeting because I knew we were not going to be here, and because we were not going to be here, it would have been illegal for me even to send out a group email to my board to let them know that, "Give me your rankings", because that'd been doing, conducting business illegal, illegal. Remember the last board meeting I told you about my character and my integrity and our honesty? That's what, that's what I was holding trust. I got this board a seven zero vote from my colleagues, they put me here for a reason, and to be honest. And so we were way ahead of the schedule, we were supposed to be interviewing this week coming and next week. So we went through the first portion so fast, we didn't kind of need a break, hot heads do come, it was a good opportunity, board members were not going to be here, they told us, they told us they were going to be out of town for a couple weeks, it was spring break. So I knew we needed, cooler heads needed to prevail. I didn't do, I didn't know articles come in the paper, but I knew, you know, cooler heads needed to prevail, and we did, so we're here today, and so to go into a closed session, to go into, to go into a closed session would be unjust to our public, because we try to do this as transparent as possible. So, my next step would be, today, I'm hoping that we could continue this, because I just assure you that V S B, V S B A says that this agreement is intact. The newspapers say it, that they spoke to all seven of us, and none of us were the breach. All seven of us have read that breach of confidentiality, that letter also stated because we are longstanding partnership and membership with V S B A, they would love to continue working with us. And guess what, we need it, we need that leadership. And so I'm going to recommend that what we would do, instead of going to closed meeting, in a few seconds, I'm going to read this statement that will, again, prevail us to the next steps. I would ask my board members, once I do that, I'm going to, I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to ask my board members to do something, and as we proceed this, it'll be all open. So, let me find this piece of literature. Okay, it says, "The Newport News School Board will be conducting interviews for the position of superintendent from April 18th through May 2nd. These interviews will be-" These interviews will be held in accordance with the Code of Virginia, section 2.23712. Now, since we're here in this, and, and what we're doing here is no names, what I will ask my board members to do from here, take your top of those candidates that meet all four qualifications and only those candidates, to rank them one, two, three with comments, and then have them back to the, the school board chair and the vice chair, not just to me, and the vice chair, to have them back to us on Sunday, which is, what's Sunday date? Sunday the 22nd at 6:00 P. M. Have them ranking your top three candidates. Have them back via email or in writing to the chair and to the vice chair, ranking one, two, three. And then what we'll do, then we'll call another meeting, and then we'll, we'll find out if we need to have another interviews come in and interview those individuals. And then hopefully by May and no later than by June, we will have an announcement of our superintendent. And I, and this is why I'm saying there was no need for us to go into a closed, a session to discuss something that I already know the answer to. And it's, and that's, and that's public, you know, we're a public body. Uh, there was nothing, no name, there was no names disclosed. It was just nothing that you guys and the whole public has agreed upon or we agreed upon. And I wanted to say that before we start hearing comments, because I think a lot of folks were here today and the fact that what they read in the paper about, you know, either PhDs, qualifications and things of that sort. And I wanted to get that out on the table in front of us in a, in a, that maybe some of these cards won't be there so long. Um, that said, um, that's kind of my, that's kind of my school board update report. That shows you where we are. That shows you where I hope that this board will go to and the qualifications, and that we're going to stand by what we say we're going to stand by and, and also represent the city and say that, you know, you guys told us what we wanted and we agreed to it. So that being said, um, I'm going to take many questions from my, my fellow board members at the time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you for that great presentation. That was excellent. Um, the only, as quoted in the newspaper, when Jane gave us a call about should we stop the superintendent's search, the only reason why I was for stopping the search because I didn't have no clear evidence what was happening. All I saw, the, saw the frantic in you that the process has been tainted. And at that particular time, if any process has been tainted with the, the hugest possibility that we have as board members, I need to know what happened, how it was tainted, and what, what's going on with the process. V S B can't just tell me just because of our longstanding with Newport News school system, you okay, we're going to sweep it under the rug. No, I need to know because I have to be able to explain to the citizens of my community what happened. I want to be tra, I want to be transparent and honest with them. So that's why I made that response to, yes, stop it. Because I think about, um, drinking water. If Waterworks, give me some water that's tainted, it's going, it's going to all break out because I want to know, why is Waterworks giving me tainted water? What are you going to do to fix it? How are you going to fix it? So I took that tame, same approach with selecting our next superintendent because that's a, that's a huge responsibility. That next individual is going to lead our whole division. So I would still want to know, you know, since we being transparent, how is that process tainted? I know it's confidential. If V S B A could send us an email or letter stating, letting us know how that process was tainted, not just saying, you're longstanding with Newport News Public School System, we're just going to sweep it out of the rug and let's continue with the search.
Uh, uh, so, uh, Mr. Ely, I asked that same question, and that, could we, could they send us a letter? And they basically says, Gary, we sent you an email. And you are the chair, and we don't talk to anyone necessarily above the chair. And that's why you have a chair. If you get conflicting evidence, all you have to do is call me. And, and here's, and, and this is why I did what I did. When they called me, they never told me exactly who or what they did, right? But through our conversation, I, I kind of know who did it. But why should me, why should I as a board, the chair board, leading this group, why am I going to chastise one of my fellow board members? It was an honest mistake. It's an honest mistake. I just said, many of us don't even interview at all ever. Why should I go and chastise one of my board members to say that you did such and such, and you did such and such, and you did such and such? And so I, I, I thought it was more manly and more respectful for the chair to stand up for the board and we would accept this because guess what? This is the board. They didn't say Gary did it. They didn't say John did it. They said the board. The board did it. And so no matter who did it, we as the board is one.
I don't think it's a matter of who did it. It's about what, I still don't know to this day.
And what's, John, uh, the key is, uh, they didn't really tell us, right? Because they didn't really tell, they didn't come out and says, Gary, this person did X, Y, Z. What I tell you is from, there's different types of levels. I mean, it's all breaching, but the key is to just say what I said in the interview that, hey, you didn't get an interview because you were too young. I mean, that's, you know, I, I assure you, tell you, I will tell you the person that did do the phone call, I kind of figured, they didn't even, they, I think they, they didn't get a vote or maybe got one vote for an interview. They would have got an interview anyway. I, they, forty-four people, they didn't even get, I don't, not sure if this person got even one vote.
So can you tell us what actually happened?
They did not, they didn't tell me. They told me, Gary, I, I, it was not worth, it wasn't worth telling me, you know? The key is they, these, these letters happen unfrequent, but they are not uncommon. Remember, they're, John, they're, they're, they're not uncommon, uh, but they're not going to go out and start just telling all the stuff because why open up a can of worms to keep the worms coming out? Just put the can on the lid and says, hey, you guys don't need to be doing it anymore. And guess what? We all agreed that we're not going to do it anymore. There's no, going to be no, there's, if we'd let someone's name out, man, you know, that's not all.
No, not the name at all, just, you know, just the, just the process. I mean, even if we, even if you could let us know maybe a closed session, like, this, this is what happened.
What's, what's what happened is someone, one of our board members, someone up here, I'm not going to make any names, someone up here got a call from an applicant, okay? And they told, basically word for word, word for word, even if one word or two words, that why that person didn't get an interview or what that person said, you know, what V S B A told us. Period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I want to know. I didn't know what happened. All I knew was it was a tainted process.
Yeah. So that, so that, that, that person, and I, I don't tell you for sure, I'm not 1,000% positive, but that person, it was in question, um, as the chair, and I sent out the, the interviews, and a lot of stuff came to me as the chair. I received, I'm going to tell you, I received about 16 phone calls from candidates that did get interviews and some who did not. Know what I tell them? I says, your applications are still active until we actually sign someone, until we actually sign a name on the contract. Each and every candidate who, who, who meet all the qualifications, their, their, their application is still in play. We can have our top three, most of these, most of these applicants are applying for many jobs throughout the country. And so some of these applicants, they may have seen in the paper, they may says, I don't even want to come here anymore. And so our top one, two, three people may be gone. We may have to go back to that nine that we interviewed first and re-interview them. And maybe some of those don't want to come here. So we still have 44 applications to choose from. So I, this is why I'm talking about interviewing. I've done interviewing before. Lots of folks have interviewed folks before. That's an interview process. This interview process, you, as long until they actually sign the contract, their application's still active.
Uh, Gary, I agree with that, and, um, I do think that when we, um, we're going to make the motion to start our conversations as a board again tonight, is that right? So that we can go into closed session for a couple of weeks to continue our search? Because I would like a chance to, to talk again about the applications that we received. So I, I would like a chance as a board to talk about the process before we do your idea of the three ranking. I, I would like to be able to talk about, you know, the applicants.
Uh, Shelley Simon, that would be, Ms. Simons, I think to go backwards, uh, to go back in, it's, because we do have qualified applicants here, right? That have made it to the next step. To go back and start, bringing, start the process back over, we would have to bring all those applicants back in. I think we'd be doing ourselves a disservice because all of us were there in those interviews and those, those candidates got the necessary votes to move forward. We have candidates that have moved forward. Why would I want to go back? You know, like American Idol, why would I want to go back to people who got kicked off three weeks ago and start saying, I want to see them again? I mean, that, that, that doesn't, that, we, we don't, we typically don't interview, that's typically not an interview process. Process, interview processes are processes, you eliminate folks, you move on to the next step, and then you only go back when needed. But to go back and start looking at applications of folks that we interviewed some three or four weeks ago, um, would not be, would not help this process any further. I think it would put us back into the same thing of why we got here and why I had to be transparent. We, that, those people didn't get here just on Gary Hunter's vote. They got here, at least four of us, at least four of us, moved that candidate forward. To go back and look at candidates that didn't get those votes, I think there's a time for that if those candidates that moved forward and none of them pan out. And I think you are correct, and then your, your, your suggestion would be appropriate that we would then go back and look at candidates that we had interviewed in the past. I mean, that's how, that's how, that's how I know how to interview. So, um, I, I, I would disagree with that. And then, you know, as the chair, you guys, you guys voted me in as the chair for a reason, to lead us forward. And I think you should let the process lead forward. We've got a very good process. I think the only thing in question, the only thing was in question was the contract intact. And I assure you a thousand times over that that contract is intact. And then if we eliminate, if we stick to what we say we was going to do about the requirements, I think that's done. And I think it's an easy process. We've got seven great board members here, and I think we've done a great job of bringing us to where we are here. We just had to stop and pause, but we do have candidates, and I would hate to go back and revisit candidates that we had already eliminated at this point. I'm, I'm just being open and transparent. Anyone else?
Uh, you know, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the update, and I thank all you all for coming out and participating, uh, in this process. Uh, the bottom line, yes, it has been a difficult process, but that's why we're here. Uh, we're here to make sure, uh, that we do, uh, not just, uh, the people's will, uh, but also do it in compliance. The, uh, I'm going to ask, uh, during the ending, uh, of this meeting, during the board's comment section, uh, that, uh, I'm going to make a motion, uh, for the board to continue with the process as contracted. And also sets the next motion, or, or within the same one, would be to only, uh, continue to interview those candidates that has met all qualifications, uh, based on the contract. So I will be making a motion on that a little later on.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, there being that, we're going to move the agenda then. I, again, I want to thank you for listening. I know it's long, uh, but I wanted to make sure that we had clarity and we had transparent, you know, through this process. I think it was real, this, this is a phenomenal school system, and this board has been a solid board together, and we can't let this little hiccup, you know, divide us. And so if we agree to continue on and we'll go back and reconfirm those, I think we are on our way again to finding that one superintendent that will help elevate us, uh, to the next level. Uh, that being said, uh, we, we'll move on. Uh, during this time of the meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. Uh, these are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Uh, please understand that we will consider your concerns and we will get back to you at a later time. So as you hear your name come forward, I would like for you to abide by our rules. Uh, we have quite a few cards up here. When you start speaking your comments, uh, green light comes on, a yellow light notifies you that there's about 30 seconds left. And when the red button hits, uh, we ask that you kindly wrap up your, uh, your comments. I'm not going to kick you off the stage, but I'm going to ask you real nicely to, hopefully you can. Okay. That being said, we're going to have the first one come up, Ms. Carl, uh, Caroline Samuels.
Chairman Hunter, um, interns superintendent, um, Nichols and board. I just want to thank you for being transparent tonight. We had very, um, a lot of comments about the newspaper article, and we wanted to ask you to go ahead and move forward with the results of the survey, the requirement and the national, um, search for the superintendent, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have, uh, Terry Jones.
Good evening, uh, Chair Hunter, Superintendent Acton Nichols, uh, Vice Chair Ashby and the rest of the school board. Um, as a nonprofit owner and as a citizen, I, I serve on many levels, but it's, it's, this is a critical time in Newport News. Transparency, trust is, is paramount. I've heard this word being mentioned at, uh, the candidates for city council boards, this board, that board. The city is in a place now where we can, we can right this ship and move forward, and I love Newport News. Been here 15 years. I've worked with many of you, uh, on endeavors because I believe everyone in this, on this board has the heart for children. But we have to do this in a way where, where the citizens' voices are being heard and promises that were being made to the citizens that what they said they wanted was being heeded to. I love the passion of each and one of you, but we all have favorites, but it's about the process. No one individual is bigger than the process. It's about what was agreed upon, and so I'm excited to hear that that's the path that is being taken by the school board, and I'm excited to serve alongside and with whomever wins and binds up being, uh, elected to be our next, not elected, but hired as our next superintendent. So, so stay the course, maintain your passion. Your passion is exciting, but at the end of the day, the process supersedes all of the personal things that we might want to see happen, and I know this board will continue to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Priscilla Barnett, and she used to be a school board member.
Mr. Hunter, Mr. Ashby, Mr. Nichols, former board, uh, board members. I just wanted, that was an excellent presentation. Communication is so powerful, and for a board, that communication is critical. And to come in front of members of our community, the teachers, and who say there is a disconnect between the board, the, uh, administration and the community and the teachers, we really need to work on that communication piece, uh, Mr. Hunter and members of the board because it makes you look a little, um, out of whack in here, and people wanting to come to this community is very, very important. So, um, and, and, and the breaches and, and all of that, those closed meetings, you know, as the chairman, it's not because you're a good old boy, it's because if you, if they breach in a closed meeting, it's, you know, it's against the law. So, uh, your job is to handle that, and that's why you have a lawyer, and that's why you have people, if they're giving out information from those closed meetings, that is a problem within the, the board. And I can understand why you would want a closed meeting after all that we just went through. But I will say thank you very much for that, um, process. And the other thing that I would like to say, I had an opportunity to go visit Huntington Middle School on Monday. The school was cleaner than passage, I would say that. Um, it was beautiful. It is well, well-kept, the children was well-disciplined, um, Ms. Milpoint is doing a fantastic job there at Huntington. Unfortunately, with the mold, the HVAC which hasn't been, um, and the roof which hasn't been repaired over 20 some years, so wherever that money that they were asking for, for Huntington, because when I was on the board, they did ask for money for Huntington, and why that didn't go- the board, they did ask for money for Huntington, and why that didn't go into Huntington and get repaired, I'm not certain because I left the board in '14, but I know that five-year plan that was in that particular process. So again, if you're going to be transparent, if you're going to be honest, make sure you're about that with everything that you do. But thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Rhonda Bell.
As a product of Newport News Public Schools, Chairman Hunter, Acting Superintendent Nichols, I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. As I said before, I am a product of Newport News Public Schools. My children attend Newport News Public Schools. I work in Newport News Public Schools. So I have a three-fold vested interest in our search for a superintendent. With that, I say thank you, Chairman Hunter, for your transparency in your report and reflections you gave this earlier today in our meeting. And I ask that you please... I heard this at a training hours attended. Trust the process. Trust the process and go with and stick with the qualifications with the requirements that we have set forth within the survey for our next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jay Pruden.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, Mr. Nichols, and the school board. I too appreciate, Gary, you being upfront and honest with the public with regards to the process of selecting the superintendent. I do believe this is the single biggest decision that the school board makes that they're ever going to make in a decade, and I know it's important to get this decision correct. It sounds like there's some contentiousness with regard to the process. I do support what you're trying to do as far as moving forward with this process. If for whatever reason that there is an issue going through this process, I can offer a compromise position. Maybe we can extend Mr. Nichols for another two, three weeks, or a month on his contract, and let's have the next school board make this decision, as I know some of the members here are up for reelection. In fact, I know one member's not even going to be on this board. So if we can't solve this issue right this second, let's let the next school board make this decision. Thank you.
Brian Cook.
Good evening, Chair Hunter, Superintendent Nichols. I'm here tonight. I know there's been a lot of talk about this 4% raise from the teachers. Now, we're here to talk about that, talk about it in a roundabout way. I just want to address the school budget process. After reviewing the numbers from the previous years, the school system has requested funds in the academic services section of the budget, which includes teacher salaries and other personnel matters. They've historically requested more funds than they've spent, averaging $7 to $10 million a year in this category historically. The city... The school board basically requests these higher salaries. They don't spend it on the salaries, and then they spend it on special projects at the end of the year with a surplus. The school board needs to do a better job in making the budget for what they actually need. If you historically need $200 million for the salaries, ask for $200 million. If you're going to do a raise, ask for $203 million. Don't ask for $212. Save the nine and put it somewhere else. That's not the way the process works. It's not transparent. Everything that's in the budget should have a budget section. If you need stuff for potholes, paving, air conditioning at the end of the year, it should be in the improvement budget. Shouldn't be hidden in the salary so you can use it later. It's not the correct way to do it. Y'all say that most of this surplus comes from attrition in the teacher segment. Either we're having a lot of turnover in teachers, which isn't good, but I don't see that. I see the numbers only showing up in the teacher section of that part. Administrators, there's no little extra funds in that section on the numbers I'm looking at. There's no extra funds on any other sections in that. Maybe one or two small items, but the majority of that money is in the teachers. So either we need to get the process right to start with, and if current people are not capable of doing that process, maybe it's time for change. But the question is, how do you... Since we don't think it's turnover is how we're getting the extra money, how are we saving some money in different ways? Then we end up with some surplus. Main thing we've done is we've reduced the number of teachers in the classroom, increasing the class size. A lot of classes have over 35 students in high school. That's unacceptable. That's bigger than a lot of college classrooms nowadays. Our schools weren't built for that. These kids can't learn in that small classroom in those large class sizes. So we're hurting the kids, and that's what we're all here for, is the kids. Increased class size causes added stress to the teachers. Which one's that? I forgot. Two seconds. Back to the teachers, they do deserve a raise. They do a great job. The money's there for it. We just need to appropriate and spend it correctly. They deserve... The main thing they deserve is respect. They deserve respect by the teachers. They deserve to have the manageable class sizes. And most importantly, they deserve the respect of the school board and the central office administrators to do what's best for them and the children. And the teachers deserve to know this as well as the citizens on where the salary money is being spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Lakeisha Arlen.
Good evening, school board, Chairman, and Acting Superintendent Nichols. I come before you with... I'm glad that we had this discussion because I had a whole thing written out, and I had a speech, and I knew I was going to nail a coffin, and I wouldn't be welcome back in Newport News ever again. However, I want to tell you a story that hit me while I was sitting here. I attended a funeral of a Newport News student, 15-year-old girl from Achievable Dream Millwood High School last Saturday. And as I sat there, I thought about what the pastor said in the sermon, and it touched my heart. And to the people who represent me, Mr. Ashby, and Mr. Ely, I will hold you accountable. And all the people that I bring that support you, we will hold you accountable. The words that the pastor said is, "Your circumstances don't make you or break you. They reveal you. And right now, at this time, all of you have the opportunity to reveal your character and your integrity, and I implore you to do so, and I hold you to responsible in my district."
Thank you.
Thank you. August Bullock. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Nichols, school board. My name is August Bullock. I am the committee chair of the Education Committee for the NAACP Newport News. I too am a product of the Newport News school system, worked here for many years, and now returning home. I want to just simply say, stay the course. Working with the community, it was quite a... We were very encouraged when we had a chance to actually participate because we had a chance to really feel that our voices mattered. It's not always been that way between our organization and the school board, and here we have a chance and a window to actually fully participate. The forums, the surveys, the feedback, the engagement was one that we just can't throw away. So I was very concerned when I saw that there was a possible change. But I just want you to say that for the long-term solutions and for the betterment of our city and for us to serve our children and for the community to be vibrantly connected with the schools, please continue to stay the course. It lays a foundation of trust. It lays a foundation that we are credible, we are finally seeing the big picture. We are indifferent. We have differences among our community, but we all came together in that survey. 1,200. I've also too spoken with others from other systems, and they thought it was phenomenal that a city this size would have that kind of turnout, which shows that there is interest and there is concern, there is care. And these were parents who care about their children. These were community members who care about the community. You had ministers, you had retirees who also care. So these individuals do care for the big picture. So we ask that you not throw away their concern and stay the course. Stay the course. And thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Priscill.
This is concerning Huntington High School. We aspire to teach children that their word is their honor and their bond. Apparently, yours is not. Previously, it is my understanding that the school board members gave their word and even signed a paper, not a legal document, to rebuild Huntington. Yet last meeting, a vote was taken to close the school and bus students to Credenton and other schools. You literally broke a promise to the students and to the parents. You are destroying the hopes and dreams of Southeastern Newport News to have a magnet school here. How seriously did you think about the decision? How many of you attended Huntington High School? Mayor Price did, but last night he stated, "Children and parents do not really care about the building regarding Huntington High School." We do care about the building as well as the issues of deterioration, infestation of bugs, and the mold issue that are extremely important to any human being. How many of you took the time to talk to children at Huntington or their parents? How much statistical data was researched about the community and the need for Huntington to remain in the community? These questions... How much statistical data was researched about our children and their health since this mold was first discovered? These questions are not inappropriate. You are closing a school that is vital to the community. Why was Huntington strong alone for 10 years before the decision to close it? 10 long years. There can be no five-year plan for mold in the school. Easton has begun a process of revitalization. Huntington should be a part of this, a new school, not patchwork repairs. Do not insult our intelligence with this. Huntington needs a school, needs a new school, and it needs to be done now. No more time for constraint... No more time for constraint excuses. I am a product of Easton. I know the needs of children because I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner. I'm very nervous. Okay? All I have to say is this. They need a positive, safe environment fostering growth in mind and body with pride in Huntington and parting themselves and the community. Our children deserve nothing less. And if I have a few more minutes. Is it possible for... To get the maintenance reports visited by the superintendent of maintenance and other qualified individuals to... And visits to Huntington High School with problem, solution, resolutions of observed problems with regards to the structure, HCVAC, and mainly the mold removal? Who is certified in the maintenance department at the school board, within the school board, to clear that mold out? If they were certified, they could have started on it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Lonnie Colson. Good evening.
Assistant Superintendent, and to all of you good people sitting before me, I thank you so very much. To you, young lady, when you see that young man that came before us earlier, please tell him that he was impressive. I think he did good. Old folks get nervous sometimes. I came here today to say to you that approximately two years ago, I began to speak to the school board about teacher aide and teacher assistance in the division. And the reason for it is that when a teacher has 30 kids in one class, and she has five classes down in North Carolina, we say that's 150 students. Now, I spoke with your former superintendent, and I was told no one in the division had 150 students to keep up with. What does that mean for the students? When the parent goes to parent view to see how their child is doing, there's a good chance that any information will be three, four weeks lag. That creates a problem for the students. I don't think we're talking about millions of dollars to address this issue, and it shouldn't be a lag time of two years to work on it. That was one of the things that I really wanted to share with you. I say to you, the good people, that I thank you. I knew when you started this process, I've lived here in Newport News long enough, this is not the first superintendent we've worked through. So from a distance, I'm familiar with it. But no matter what the struggle is, I want you to remember that there are people out there that really, really wish you the best. Some 50 years ago or more, I was involved in a struggle with schools far, far, far south of here. It became contentious. It became violent. We had a child have a breakdown in the classroom. She was beaten in the car. So as one of those young people that was eager in leading this, I decided, I thought maybe we need to back off from this, not do this. And I want to share with you what my neighbor came to me one evening and said. She's a Lonnie. Stay the course. She said, "When good people are sleeping, they do good. Stay the course."
Thank you. Rick Jones.
Mr. Hunter, Nichols, all your school board members, it's nice to see your smiley faces. Sometimes there... Well, I wanted to come... My name, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Rick Jones. I'm a retired school teacher in Newport News, and I ran for school board for three years, three different times. And I tell you that because I want you to know that Newport News schools is very, very important to me. I think that the children that are going through our schools are going to be the people that are in charge of things whenever I'm going to need somebody to be having a smart, good head, making good and smart decisions. So I wanted to mention tonight, one of the things that disappoints me is that the school board, the administration can't come up with the funds necessary to be able to give the teachers and staff members the kind of increase that I think that they've been deserving for a while. For years and years and years, since 2008, in the financial crisis, we've been saying, "Yeah, wait, 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 wait." And they're continuing to have to wait. The ones I'm most concerned with are the people that make the lower half of our salary members, just like I'm more interested in the students that are on the bottom half of our academic plan too. The people... This is the one thing I think is very hard for everybody to understand, that just because you're going to give a percentage raise doesn't mean that the thing is being fair. Okay? If we take Mr. Nichols or a lot of people out here that make $100,000, and we're going to give them a 4% increase, we're going to raise their salary $4,000. That's enough money... That's enough money, that's $300 and some dollars a month to do something extra with. Now, if we take one of our custodians or one of our people that make, let's just say, $10,000 because it's easy, we give them a 4% increase, they get $400. That's about $30 a month, you know? Whoopie. If I gave Mr. Nichols a $30, or somebody, anybody on the administration up here, a $30 a year, a $30 a month pay raise, they would go chump change, you know? I spend more than that going out to lunch with people sometimes. So, what I'm saying is that if you say that you're going to give a 4% pay raise and it's too expensive, well, look at another way of doing that. It doesn't have to be that you give a 4% pay raise. Why don't you give everybody $1,000? Or everybody $1,500, or $2,000? Look at the amount of money you have to go with and say, "How do we divide that up evenly?" Because why does somebody that already makes $100,000 need 10 times the pay raise as what I would call a poor person? We have people working for us that make less than what we consider poverty level. Okay? So, I'm looking, I mean, I'm asking you to look at different things. That, another thing that we do in Newport News that's not quite fair is that we subsidize some of our married individuals' insurance at a higher rate than we do our single members. In other words, if I was married for the 22 years I worked for Newport News, during the last few years, somebody over here who was married and had three children would make, you know, we get $200 more per month contributed towards their healthcare than I got. And you want to talk about fair? That's not, that's, that's money being spent giving it to somebody. It's not quite equitable. Anyway, I thank you for staying the course. I was going to say something about, you know, about the process, but I think the process is very defined. I think that there is probably very little, from what you have been explaining to us, that anybody else needs to hear about. And so, I thank you for, I thank you. And I think like that lady said there, you know, the voters are to hold you, or should hold you responsible for the types of decisions that you make. And so, like she said, she's going to hold her people responsible. Thank you so much for what y'all do.
Thank you. Rhonda Wagner.
Hi, Rhonda Wagner. Good evening again. Oops, got to open this. First, I would like to say thank you to the board members who came to the city council meetings to fight for us. We really appreciated it, and we thank you for everything you had to say. Now, Chairman Hunter, you took all of my words, so I'm just going to add a few things, building on what Rick said about the healthcare. There are some things like that that I wish we could look into. As a married family person, I pay almost $700 a month for healthcare. And with the co-pays having gone up, my son had about three procedures this year, and I also went in for surgery, $400 co-pay a pop. So, that's, that's a lot of money. If I wasn't married to a guy who didn't have a degree, he does refrigeration, so he makes a little more than me because he doesn't have a degree. Anyway, back to the discussion at hand. It is my understanding that the board came to a consensus on what the qualifications of the superintendent must have. And while I do like you very much, I appreciate the conversations we've had. I was tasked with coming here because so many of my members have said, "Listen, there's a process, we voted, we expressed ourselves, and we want to hold them to that." And the 1,221 responses is overwhelming. And it is also my understanding that we spent $30,000 to hire this company. And that's actually a position that we could have hired, so I really want you to respect the process. And I do understand the difficulty in navigating a unanimous vote. Believe me, I get it. So, please, take that into consideration as you move forward. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you. James Stansel.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Let me continue speaking for the 70% of your students that are C and D students, and you sending them out of school knowing George Washington's birthday every year with nothing else. First thing I want to bring to your attention, I was reading the USA Today recently. I don't know if any of you all read the USA Today, but Home Depot announced a $50 million grant that they're trying to give away for trade programs. Now, I got to school all you Huntington grads that come in here speaking about Huntington, and that idea kind of swirled in my brain. Why don't we apply for some of this grant money from Home Depot, put some of our students in trade skills such as Home Depot is trying to promote building skills because of the shortage of building skills now? And let's remodel Huntington with the students and make it a trade school. That's what I would like to see Huntington done into. Not only should it be a trade school that should have home economics because these mothers need to know how to sew and cook again, because you got a lot of them out here feeding their kids chicken nuggets. All you got to do is look in their grocery basket when you in the store, all right? And it's time we started retraining people on how to feed people. But my idea is, apply for the grant with Home Depot since they trying to give it away. And on top of that, I'm reading further, Home Depot has scholarships for trade school students in their senior years of school. Do we have any, do we have any construction skill trade programs? No! So, my seniors can't get these scholarships. That's something to be looking into, folks. Now, you know, I realize we don't read diversely, and Home Depot putting up $50 million to sit here and try to create some more craftsman, I would expect the school board to make an announcement or either your grant person or somebody, I don't know who does your grants, all right? But apparently, they're not on the job because they're not reading diversely enough for me. All right? And I've done grants before, know all about them. Whoever you got in charge of it, you need to fire them because they're not, they're not looking around enough, all right? Then on top of that, I understand that the school teachers got a 2% raise last year with a 3.8%, I've been explained, what do they call it? Compression adjustments for certain individuals. So, I came to the conclusion, well, if you're looking for 4% this year and you got 2% last year, why not get 2% this year and that equals 4%? You know what I mean? Now, I understand you got budget problems, and the last thing I'm going to suggest is you need a major audit, all right? Because you don't even know where your money going. If you got $9 million sitting around every year, you don't even know how it's being spent. That tells me right there that your audit is not good. Whoever your auditor is, you need to fire him and get another one, all right? Because they're not doing a thorough job. I can audit books better than that. And one last thing, Mr. Hunter. I've been on search committees for over million-dollar jobs. You never speak. If somebody calls you, you tell them, "I can't talk on the subject matter." You don't sit here because you know them and tell them something. You messed up there, okay? You violated the rules of the interview process. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Betty Dixon. And Miss Betty Dixon's also a former school board member as well.
She's a former school board member and a teacher in the Newport News system for 35 and a half years. And varied career at Demby, at Huntington, it's a middle school. And then, my last year's at Menchville. And I taught English and I taught social studies. I am very concerned that we have a person that has been a superintendent in another system and can show what improvements he or she has made in the school system. Now, a PhD is very important, and I think it is necessary. But what improvements that he or she has made is more important. We need a person from a system that is fully accredited or is making positive progress. In 2008, 2009, all the schools in Newport News were fully accredited. They've gone down since then. We have gone from all accredited to 17, excuse me, partially accredited or denied accreditation this year. So, 20 are accredited fully. 12 of them are partially accredited and five not accredited. This is according to the numbers on the Virginia Department of Education website. I know that they're changing requirements for accreditation. What concerns me is, are we lowering the requirements rather than making the students come up to the requirements? I know I'm going to run out of time. I just want you to know, again, according to the Newport News, to the Virginia Education website, with reading and writing, you have to have 75% pass rate. Newport News, for all schools, 68% are reading and writing on level. That's unacceptable to me. Writing is 69%. History, math, and science require 70% pass rate. History is 81% of all, 81% of all of our students are passing. 71% of all of our students are passing math, and that's 70%. And then, science is 74%. We have got to spend more effort on English, reading, and writing. I said that when I was on the board, and you all thought I was old-fashioned then. Well, I'm a lot older now than I was then, so I guess you all really think I'm old-fashioned. But I am telling you, we've got to teach the students to read, and we have to teach them to write correctly. Thank you, and I'm glad that you are going to stay the course with the recommendations from the citizens for the superintendent's search. Good luck.
Thank you. Ms. Janie Baysmore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Board members, Mr. Superintendent. First, I would like to say happy birthday in heaven to my sister Peggy Louise Baysmore, who served in the Newport News Public School System for 28 years as a physical education and family life teacher. She was loved by her students, and she made a difference in a lot of lives. Happy birthday, sis. We are still having that feeling of a ping-pong tennis ball effect. We're still playing a blame game, but that's okay. We, as professors, adults with the children at heart, are going to put that to rest tonight. We are not able to do anything about neglect or inactions of the past. That's gone, and there's nothing we can do to change it. So, let's start from this moment to correct the missteps we have made. If there is money in the system to begin the process of renovating or rebuilding Huntington, let's stop putting it off and use those funds to do what we need to do to fix Huntington. If the school board does not have the funds, I want to put in an official request to the city council now and make it an official request on official stationery, not an email, in writing. For whatever millions we need to rebuild or whatever millions we need to renovate. We don't care which, as long as we get that school reopened as soon as possible. Administrations change, people change, boards change. We don't want to be caught up in the negative change. We can't wait. We can't wait because this is about the children. It is not about us. We can't wait because we cannot afford to be caught up in any kind of litigation about violations of court orders or anything of that nature. We can't wait because to do so violates the rights of students in the Southeast, in Southeast Newport News to be entitled to their neighborhood school. Seek funding, and let's be about giving our children the best that we can offer them. You know my position on superintendent. Look in the backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dominic Green.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Hunter. Good evening, school board members. I just want to say thank you, first of all, for the hard work that you're putting in. I definitely think you should stay the course. I think that we are overdue for a superintendent, so I'm glad we were able to resolve that tonight. I'm coming to you tonight to talk about what I think is critical for the health and safety of our students. I've launched what's called the Green Initiative. Some of you have heard about it. I was born and raised in the zip code. And the reason that zip codes are important today is because there have been studies, and they've come up in a lot of the mayoral debates where we're talking about the issues of the environment. Well, the zip code 23607 is one of the most polluted zip codes in the entire state and in entire country. Where I was raised on 14th Street in Jefferson, there are coal mines, and there are lots of other companies that are operating in that area where children that attend the Achievable Dreams Academy, Dunbar, and so forth, go every day. And they live in the same polluted environment that I grew up in as a child, 23607. And so, the challenge that you have, even in electing and deciding who's going to be the next superintendent, is where do the boundaries of your responsibilities start and where do they stop? It's very easy to neglect children who go home to polluted environments as long as the school is not polluted. But we have to realize that the responsibility that we all have as citizens, as school board members, as teachers, everyone else in this room, is to make sure that every child is protected, no matter where they are. A question was asked about whether we should install air pollution monitors in the Achievable Dreams School. I resoundingly gave them my example of living downtown in 23607, where I would take my finger on any given day, run it across the window sill, and have a finger full of dust. That's a reality today for many of our children that are going to the Achievable Dreams School, Dunbar Airborne School, as well as anyone in that area in the 23607 zip code. Air monitors, as an engineer, I'll tell you, air monitors are simply saying, "We're monitoring the environment to determine just how bad that environment is." And I'm sure there should be no one that disagrees that it's a bad environment at this point with the studies that have been done. But we need to allocate funding to make sure that our school systems are safe. This is an easy one. As you're talking to the superintendent, as you're going through the process, as you're having discussions on your own, think about, "What is our green economy going to look like? What are the green initiatives that we can look forward to? What should we be thinking about five and 10 years from now when we have schools like Huntington Middle School, where I went, where they've been neglected for over a decade?" We have to put that in the forefront of all the discussions that we're having. I'm asking for you to do that. My uncle always told me that if you find your voice, you find your passion. I have found my passion, and I'm asking you to also embrace that same passion. Think about the green in everything that you do. Think about the economy, think about initiatives, and think about the students that are suffering today because we're not looking out for them, even if it happens outside of our school district. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. So, are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? It's just been a long night. I'm going to tell you, can we take a five-minute break? No? Do you want to continue on?
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay, recess. For, it's 8:25 on that, so we'll be back right at 8:30. More the clock.
Second.
Second. You heard the motion for recess for five minutes. Do we call a roll?
You say all in favor.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay, welcome back from our five-minute break. We're going to move the agenda to number four, our consent agenda. Here's that word again, consent agenda. So, in the consent agenda, agenda items 4.01, the minutes from the special meeting and work session, March 12th. And then, 4.02, the minutes from the special meeting and work session, March 13th. 4.03, the financial report, revenue and expense, March 2018, child nutrition services, March 2018, and personnel report. Do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a motion that we move to approve the consent agenda, 4.0.
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Hinton, would you call a roll?
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Starchill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
And Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Thank you. We are going to move to item five, action items, 5.01, personal actions. Mr. Nichols?
We have none tonight.
Okay. Next item, we'll have 5.02, sale tower lease extension at Demme High School. And who's going to give us that report? Here. It's this vote? Oh, actually, we presented that last week, at our last meeting, and we just need a motion to approve that.
Sumoed?
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Hinton, please call a roll.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Starchill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
And Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll move on to our next action item. We heard again from Dr. Mitchell last week, last meeting, 5.03, Special Education Annual Funding Plan. Do we have a motion for approval?
Sumoed?
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Hinton, please call a roll.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Starchill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
And Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll move on, thank you. Moving right along, we're at item number six, Report and Information, 6.01. We have the budget update. Ms. Mary Lou Rousseau, will you give us our update?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Mr. Nichols, members of the board. I've been asked to respond to the concerns that were raised about the school division's budget at last week's council meeting, so I'm here to do that this evening. But before I started that, I thought it might be helpful to refresh everyone's memory about what was included in the school board's approved budget, just a really brief summary. The school board budget includes salary increases of 4%. It also includes compression adjustments for teachers and support staff. This is something that we, I'm sorry, thanks for the show. This is something that we've been doing for several years for teachers, and we have also begun to do that for our support staff. I think one of our speakers addressed the fact that some of our support staff don't make a lot of money. We know that, and in fact, some of our starting pay was not very competitive with the community. So we've taken action, as you know, to address that. And that created some compression, sorry, some compression within our support staff ranks, and so we've addressed that. We have no increases to our healthcare premiums for the school division or for staff in this budget, and there are no changes to our co-pays or deductibles. We did have a lower VRS rate, the state established for the budget, but the city increased our pension cost for next year. This budget includes seven additional ESL teachers, two additional guidance counselors, and two HVAC apprentices. We need to replace our telephone system, which we're planning to do now over two years. We have a voice-over IP system that was installed eight years ago. In December, it went out of support, and parts are no longer available, so it's necessary to replace the phone system. We're just going to do it a little slower than we'd originally planned. Our budget includes a replacement of our teacher laptops at middle school and an upgrade to the elementary school teacher laptops. We'll install new hard drives and put them on Windows 10 and extend the life of those for another year or two. And as there's been some discussion about this evening, your budget also includes the premise that we will close Huntington. So that's a little overview of what's in the budget. All right, now to address the concerns that were raised at last week's meeting, starting with this slide that was provided. I guess the first point I'd like to make is that these numbers are accurate. It is true that we do spend less for personnel services than is in our budget. I think probably most school divisions do, frankly, but we certainly do. What the city is suggesting that we do in our budget is that we institute an attrition credit. And what that would do, right now, what's in our budget for personnel costs is what we expect to pay and the benefits we expect to pay for all the employees that we expect to have in our budget for next year. That's how our salaries and budget are determined. What the city is suggesting we do is use an attrition credit, which would reduce both our salaries and benefits budgets in recognition of the fact that we won't be fully staffed next year, or any year for that, for that matter. And we understand that. In fact, the city does use attrition credits in developing their budget. This information is taken from city manager position papers and transmittal letters. This is what the city's attrition has looked like from 2008 through 2017. You can see that they began their attrition credit at about $1 million, or precisely at $1 million in 2008, and it moved up to a peak of $6.4 million. And in 2017, it was at 4.4 million. The quotes that are on the slide are from the city manager transmittal letters when he sent the budget to the city council in those years. In 2015, the left upper quadrant quote, it says that, this is a quote of the city manager, "As this attrition credit has grown over time to balance the budgets, it has created an unrealistic representation," his words, not mine, "of the true cost of both staffing and operating the city." In 2017, same letter accompanying the budget to the city council, "While I understand the reason for doing this, the attrition credit has proven unrealistic in some areas and inhibited our flexibility to hire staff when needed." That quote was too long, full quote, too long to get on the slide. It went on to say this, "Recognizing this, we have reduced the value of the credit over the past two fiscal years." You can see that that was done from 15 to 17. This is a significant change in our approach to attrition, but we are not finished with this process. I fully expect in 2018 to continue to adjust the attrition credit to a realistic and manageable amount, recognizing the appropriate staffing levels. One could imagine that it was going to continue to go down. Of course, we changed city managers. There's nothing in the 18 and 19 letters, so we don't know what really happened to attrition with the city budgets, but something perhaps less than 4.4 million, just a speculation. There are a couple of differences between city and school division funding rules that I think are important to understand. School divisions cannot spend more than the revenue that you receive. If our revenue budget is 300 million, but we receive 295, we can only spend 295. That's it. We cannot maintain a fund balance. Cities can. So if we have a $300 million budget and plans to spend it, and we don't have a fund balance, we have to figure out how we're going to lower our spending. That's what we have to do. The slide I have up for you this evening now is the city's use of fund balance to balance their budget. And so what does that mean? They use these amounts as sources of revenue. They call them non-revenue receipts. These numbers, according to, again, this is from the city manager's budget transmittal letters, 2015 through 19, was represented as what their surplus was. So in 2014, apparently, they had a year-end surplus of 3.3 million, and they used that to balance their following year's budget. Nothing wrong with that. So, but we can't do it. We don't have a surplus to balance our budgets. The city didn't actually need to use those funds until last year, 2017. And of the 4.7 million, what was reported in the news is that they used 3.8 million of it to actually use to balance their budget for last year. And why did they have to do that? Because their revenues were less than they anticipated, and their expenditures were more. That happens here, too. Some years, our expenditures are more in certain areas than we had hoped, and some years, our revenue is lower. The city's rating agencies don't like to see cities do this two years in a row. So this year, the city instituted a hiring freeze in order to make sure that they don't have to do this again for '18. And that's understandable. But if we were to try to do a hiring freeze here, half of our staff teaches. Half of our staff teaches. About 2,000 people teach. There are another 300 people who are teacher assistants in our classrooms. There are another 500 people that run our transportation operation. Who will we freeze? I'm not really sure. Well, I'm sure we'd figure it out. Okay, another point I want to address, and that is, what did the money go for that didn't go for salaries? All right. I've already mentioned that we cannot spend money we do not receive. So that red part is the revenue shortfall for those four years. We had a revenue shortfall in one year of $189,000. It's not much. The next year, it was $5 million. And over those four years, the revenue shortfall totaled 11.7 million. Just a few years before this period, this period started in 2014, just a few years before that, in 2010, a revenue shortfall was $7.5 million that we had to figure out. Because turnover is unpredictable, turnover, attrition, call it what you will, we don't use these funds for recurring cost. We use them for one-time cost. The largest things, the largest categories of cost that we use them for are maintenance and technology. You can see that reflected here of this funding over four years. 13.2 million went for maintenance, 12.7 million went for technology, and you can see the other areas and how much went there. In the technology area, we've purchased teacher and student and administrator computers. We've replaced interactive whiteboards in our classrooms. Recall that we, some of you may not recall, we bought those initially with stimulus funds. They were never in a budget. We purchased instructional software, network security software. You might recall, just a couple of years ago, we replaced our network access points to make sure that our network access was better in our schools. We have 28,000 computers in the school division to keep current. The only other source of funding we have is money that we get from the state every year. We get some money for student computers, but it doesn't address all of our student computer needs. The other area of maintenance, we request funding from the city for HVAC system replacements, and the money that we get from them is used for that purpose. But there are a lot of things that happen between replacements. So the replacement might happen every 20 years, every 25 years, depending. But boilers need to be replaced, chillers need to be replaced, other HVAC parts, rooftop units, all kinds of other things need to be done. That's done with some of this money. We've done some roof work. We replaced Yates Roof from this source of funding. It was leaking. There were lots of leaks in classrooms. It needed to be done, and so we got it done. We do paving. We do fill potholes before they swallow our buses and residents' cars. We have 130 acres of paved surfaces, bus lots, parking lots, bus loops, paved playgrounds, sidewalks, 130 acres. It's expensive to do. We replaced flooring, bleachers, casework in our classrooms, sewer lift pumps, main electrical panels, learning cottage replacements. Some of our trailers, which we call learning cottages because it just sounds better, are 40 years old. They really aren't built to last that long, so we replace them. This is the source of funding we use to do that. In the area of safety and security, we've replaced security cameras, the software and equipment to drive those cameras, keep our kids safe in school. We've replaced fire intrusion alarm systems in our buildings, stage winches and lighting on our stages, those kinds of things to make sure kids are safe in school and staff is safe. We've replaced $1 million worth of support vehicles. Over that period of time, we have 168 support vehicles that our maintenance folks use, our technology folks use, our transportation folks use to get around the city, to do the jobs that they have to do. In the area of instructional equipment and supplies, we've replaced musical equipment, instruments for kids, PE equipment, classroom textbooks, not textbooks, just classroom books. In the other category, things like bus cameras, radios, classroom furniture, things that we really don't have room for in our budget. You know, because I've told you many times, the largest part of our budget, 86% of our budget, is addressed with salary costs and all personnel costs, salary and benefits. That leaves 14% to do everything else. That's not a lot. That number used to be bigger. As the recession hit, it was smaller, and it's never really come back. And of that money, that 14%, that's addressing other things, half of that is really not discretionary. It's for things that we really can't choose not to do. It's for utilities. It's for fuel to power our buses. It's for New Horizons tuition, which is $6 million. It's for things that we really can't choose in the short term not to do. So it really doesn't leave a lot else in the budget to do these kinds of things, and this is how it's gotten done. Okay, so hopefully that addresses the first four columns. What I want to talk about next is the 22 million higher than the prior fiscal year comment from 2017 to '19. That is a two-year period, and so this is easily obtainable in our budget document. But it includes the salary increases for 2018 and '19. Now, this slide that we're looking at assumed the 2% raise, not the 4%. So that would be a 2% increase in both years, '18 and '19. We've done compression adjustments. Teacher raises have been between 2.5% to 3.9%, depending on where the teachers were on the scale in '18. In '19, the budget with only a 2% raise would provide 2.8% to 3.8% raises for teachers, again, based on where they are on the scale. For support staff, we've increased the hourly starting pay, as I mentioned earlier, for several of our support staff groups, and we've provided compression adjustments to them where we could. You may have forgotten, but in 2017, we had substitutes contracted out. We brought those back in-house in 2018, so their salaries went in here, $2.6 million with that. That was offset by a reduction in our contracted services that same year in the budget. That's the salary information. Total's $15.8 million over those two years. In 2018 and '19, we also benefit changes, the largest of which was VRS. You might recall that our VRS rate was increased almost two points in '18. For '19, the rate decreased, but we still have increases for VRS, just because we have increased salaries. So the VRS eligible salaries are charged VRS. As I mentioned earlier, the city retirement increased, and then FICA on wages. So that's a $5.8 million increase. So that's, there's your 22 million right there. All right, this slide was also part of the presentation last week. I think what it's supposed to show is that our enrollment dropped and our city contribution went up. Both are true. That's true. But it does make us unique. These are four other districts, or three other districts and us, with the enrollment change, the percentage change. All are down. It's not unusual in this area. Most of this area enrollment has been down over this period of time. The local revenue in every case is up. The city's population is also down. Their general fund is up. It's an 11-year period. Costs go up typically. This is another slide in the presentation last week. It shows 14% increase from FY '18 to '19, FY '08 to '19, an 11-year period. It shows that, this excludes debt service, so this is just city support for school operations, without debt service. This is an annual growth rate of 1.2%. Inflation over this period has been 1.7%. If you look at that same slide with debt service, the increase of the school division year. I think this is, this slide was also included in the presentation, and I think this really is the question that we are, as a community, wrestling with and need to continue to wrestle with, and that is, what investment is the city wanting to make in public education in 2019 or any other year? That concludes my presentation. Mr. Hunter.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Russo. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you, Mary Alou, for your presentation, and thank you for continuing to keep us abreast of what's going on with the budget.
Anyone else? Ms. Simon?
You know, I just want to point out that, as a parent, if we're budgeting for our present realities and a teacher who might have 20 years of service, and that teacher decides to retire halfway through the year, as a parent, I want the school system to be able to replace that teacher with another teacher who has 20 years' experience. I don't want to bake into the system that every time an experienced teacher leaves that we're guaranteeing that we're going to replace that teacher with a brand-new teacher. I want, I want to have a budget that allows us to replace that teacher with somebody at the same level. So, you know, I think it's really important for flexibility that we do have a budget that reflects the facts on the ground with our staffing needs at the beginning of the year. So I think that because we can't, you know, run a surplus, that we are different from the city, and that's important for citizens to keep in mind. We can't do a hiring freeze. You know, we've got children to teach. So I want to thank you for your presentation and keeping, keeping us informed.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I want to thank you as well for your presentation. A few questions here, just to follow up. In reflecting on what appears on about Slide 4, where we talk about what went up, is it fair to conclude that from the, from the first slide when we talk about the $22 million, that all $22 million went to our people, went to our staff?
Yes.
In terms of those costs? So one of the accusations that has, that has been made was that we are not using these end-of-year funds for our staff, and it appears that we are using all of the funds for our staff.
Well, actually, the end-of-year funds are here. So we do budget for all staff at the cost that we expect to pay them. That's in the budget. If we have turnover, so everyone isn't here all year, this is where the money goes at the end of the year.
Okay. But the $22 million that has been, that is the difference between
Yes.
2017 and 2019
Yes.
Is all for staff.
Yes.
It's all for personnel costs.
Yes.
It is not for
It's what we anticipate our personnel cost to be, based on what our role is for next year, yes.
And so as well, one of the questions that's been levied is, why not take the end-of-year funding and use that for a school like Huntington or other schools that are in distress? And why would the end-of-year funding not be sufficient to save a school like Huntington or another school? In terms of the, I understand the HVAC system is like $14 million, you know, a full replacement of Huntington would be $36 million. Why not use that, that funding for those purposes?
Well, it really isn't sufficient in any given year to do that. The HVAC system at Huntington replacement is 11 million, not 14, but the roof is another three, doesn't need to be done quite yet, but it will need to be done soon. We don't have enough money in any particular year-end to do an $11 million replacement of the HVAC at Huntington. And if, and because the plan has been, you requested money to replace Huntington, would it be prudent to spend $11 million to replace the HVAC in a, in a building which you plan to replace?
Right. So in the, what has happened is that we haven't had enough funding to do a major project like is what, like what is needed to save a facility like Huntington, and then the following year in our capital budget, we have not received the funding that was promised in that capital budget to, to do the project from the previous year.
We're deviating a little bit from the operating budget, but the capital budget is soon to be before you. The capital budget is a five-year plan. That's the way the city does their budget. And what goes in the first year is what the city acts on. That's what they actually approve, and from that they make appropriations. We have not put Huntington in the first year because we needed time between the design of Huntington and the actual construction of Huntington. It will take us a little while to design the building. So we put the design money first and then the construction money. So we haven't gotten to that yet. So we have the design money in the budget. Hopefully, we'll get the construction in the next upcoming CIP budget before you in the next month or so, and it's my expectation that you'll see Huntington in the first year.
And I guess my other questions are largely around, it's been speculated or said that there is money within our budget to provide the 4% raise that our staff need, and what's your assessment of that?
Well, if we do that, I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope because, let's go this. So if we take $3 million out, that's what you need to make this raise happen, because we've already taken out part of the phone system, that other million dollars to cover the other million of the 2%. Now we're starting to tighten the distance between what the actual might be and what the budget is. So if we have a revenue shortfall, and we've had them in each year, as I mentioned, there's quite a variability. So our budget, our revenue budget is based on how many students we expect to have, but we don't know how many will be here until September. So could we do it? I think we could do it. But should we do it? I think that's a different question. I think we're just wrestling with that. What if we have a revenue shortfall and then we have expenses that we didn't expect to have for any reason, as the city did just last year themselves?
And the follow-up
How do we balance the budget?
The follow-up question to that is, under the, under the scenario of having a revenue shortfall, so doing that $3 million and having a revenue shortfall the following year, the largest remedy would probably be laying people off. Is that, is that a situation where, that we would find ourselves in, in terms of trying to balance?
We would do everything we could, Mr. Brown, to make that not happen.
Right.
Because that's not good for anybody. So I don't know how we would make it work. We always seem to be able to make it work. During the recession, that was happening around us. It did not happen here.
Right. So that other school divisions, that was how they balanced that revenue shortfall, was by laying people off.
Yes.
So you're giving a raise one year, and you're turning around, and people are getting a pink slip the following year, which is no good for anyone.
And we tried, we tried not to do that here. So we will try not to do that.
And lastly, I wanted to ask about this. It appears that, you know, this attrition credit, have, has the city manager or other staff talked to you about their use of attrition credit and why it was, why they made a point of featuring attrition credit for us when they have attrition credit, but they didn't include it in any of their budget presentations?
No, I've had no conversation with the city manager about that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
I would just like to thank you for coming forward and putting, putting forward our internal budget process and how we do this. When you start the year, you have to fund it, and you have to fund all the positions. And when you finish up at the end of the year, if you have, if you have savings, you can't take those savings, that's a one-time thing
Good.
And turn it around and say, we can give a permanent raise into the future, because that permanent raise into the future is a yearly increase that comes due every year. So one-time savings can't be used to fund A raises. They can be used to fund personnel costs. Sometimes we have increases in VRS, sometimes we have increases in other areas, and we've used those surpluses to cover that. Over the years that I've been on the school board, I've seen a masterful approach to budgeting, given the fact that we don't have access to borrowing money and we don't have, we don't, we don't go down to City Council every year and say we need another, you know, million or $2 million. We have managed this, managed it well, and the, the use of any surplus funds at the end of the year, every year, is, has been looked at in terms of how to address the additional costs that we've had over the course of the year and try to make the best decisions for the division. Sometimes those additional surplus funds have been used for one-time bonuses. Sometimes they've been used for other incentives. The real thing we've got to figure out how to do is get off of this he-said, she-said approach to budgeting and managing the funding of the school division. And that has got to happen in an honest way, instead of trying to develop two sets of figures and then pointing fingers at each side. We've been doing our job to run this place on a budget that's balanced, and we hit the end of the year, and we cover what we need to do. As reduction in capital money has, has happened in the last several years, an enormous amount of pressure has been put on the division to fix its roofs and its heating and cooling. You know, that pressure's related to the Huntington situation. This isn't, this is, this argument right now is not about whether there's something improper going on. This problem right now is about the city not funding our capital and putting pressure on the school division. Our honest answer back is, you've got to fund us. Otherwise, you're going to break the back of the school division. And that's my considered opinion. I, I think we've got to get beyond, you know, painting just part of a picture and leaving an impression that somebody's not doing their job right. This board, our leadership on the budget, your work has been masterful. It's, it's held the organization together and made all of, all of it work year over year. Let's have an honest discussion in the future about what it takes to run the division.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But thank you, Ms. Russo. I will move the budget.
I mean, we'll move the agenda. Item 6.02, Youth Development in Action, Mr. Rantum and Ms. Adams. Is that correct?
Good evening, Mr. Hunter.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Mr. Nichols. I'm delighted to be here with you, the two of my youth development colleagues. Tonight, we're pleased to bring to you Proposed Revisions to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, a report on youth development initiatives, and an update on our restorative practices As we begin tonight, I would like to once again share our youth development model. You have seen this document many times before because it is a living, breathing document that we constantly update and revise. We begin at Level 1, our Universal Supports for All Students. Here, we find our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. As a reminder, our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is a tool that provides guidance to our students, our families, and our staff. This is why this book is important, and it is a Level 1 support for our kids. There are several phases to our revision process. After reviewing guidelines and recommendations, we begin to gather stakeholder input from multiple groups. Once again this year, we were able to survey our families through ParentView. We received over 1,200 responses. 86% reported the handbook easy to locate. 87% found it easy to understand, and 86% said it was a helpful resource. So after gathering feedback from our students, our administrators, our staff, our families, and more, I'm delighted to bring to you this evening two changes to our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook that are the result of the ideas, suggestions, and concerns we received throughout this revision process. For many years in middle school and high school, we had a zero-tolerance policy for fighting. All students received a 10-day suspension for fighting regardless of their level of involvement in the fight. We began to move away from that zero-tolerance practice a few years ago. We started in our middle schools by changing the middle school fighting policy to five days for the first fight, 10 days for the second fight, long-term suspension for the third fight. Because that, excuse me, because that was found to be successful and our recidivism rate was so low last year, I stood before you and requested to make the same change in high school, which you approved. I return again this evening with another proposed change to the fighting policy. The proposed amendment pictured here will completely do away with the predetermined number of days when a student is involved in a fight. However, it continues to ensure that out-of-school suspension is the consequence for fighting. For our second proposal this evening, we would like to offer a change to the cell phone policy for elementary and secondary students. Currently, in our handbook, under cell phone guidelines, it explains that students should not use their cell phone to record other students or staff without their permission. Now, this particularly happens in a fighting situation. We are proposing to simply move information from the cell phone guidelines to the Rules section in order to clarify the policy as provided in the handbook. The cyberbullying consequence that may also be used in these situations will remain in the handbook. Finally, this evening, there are two new pieces of legislation that were passed by our state legislature and signed into law by the governor that need to be included in our handbook this year. The first change to the Code of Virginia revises the definition of long-term suspension. Under the new definition of long-term suspension, a student is not permitted to attend school for 11 to 45 school days. This is a change from the state's current definition of long-term suspension, where a student is not permitted to attend school from 11 to 364 calendar days. The second revision to the state code prohibits students in preschool through third grade from being suspended for more than three school days. It also prohibits students in preschool through third grade from being expelled from school unless the incident meets the criteria in the slide presented here. As a reminder, we seek your approval of the proposed revisions of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook at the May 15 Board Meeting. Certainly, the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is just one piece of our Level 1 supports for all students. I'm delighted that my colleague, Ms. Bridget Adams, will come and share with you some of our exciting works happening for all of our Newport News students.
Thanks, Jerome. Good evening.
Good evening.
As always, it's wonderful to be here before you once again to talk about the amazing work that our students continue to lead across the division as part of the STAND movement. As you may recall, when STAND was launched, our goal was to establish a common message that would speak to the culture we envisioned for our schools. We also talked about how critical it was to have students take the lead in addressing some of the most, most pressing issues, including how students treat each other and how they see themselves. Since its inception, now two years ago, we have seen students embrace the principles of STAND and begin to really work intentionally to drive the development of positive culture, not only in their schools, but also in our community. Tonight, I'm going to talk about two specific student-led initiatives, which are directly related to the STAND mission. First, in February, a team of our high school students collaborated with college students from Christopher Newport, Hampton, and Virginia Commonwealth Universities and local community partners to present the Bloom Middle School Girls Empowerment Conference at Christopher Newport University. We had hoped to accomplish three things with this important project. First, we wanted to provide high school students with an opportunity, opportunity to design and and lead a major service project. Second, we wanted to empower middle school students to promote positive culture in their own schools. And finally, we wanted to engage local college students and community partners in our efforts to prepare our students to be citizen-ready. We have lots of resources and activities to help students become strong leaders. But with this project, we really wanted to instill in them their capacity to impact the world. In just two short months, the Bloom planning team, which included Ms. Ramirez, created a vision for what would become not just an event, but an ongoing collaborative effort designed to provide social and emotional learning and skills training for our secondary We were very fortunate to have the full use of the beautiful David Student Union at Christopher Newport University. More than 60 volunteers welcomed nearly 200 girls from our eight middle schools who braved the cold to experience a full eight-hour day of activities, which included a panel discussion led by high school and college students, followed by informative breakout sessions which addressed relevant topics for middle school girls, such as Mean Girls, which was about dismantling the culture of disrespect and bullying among girls; Love Me, Love Me Not, which emphasized how to recognize and avoid unhealthy and toxic personal relationships; and World Changer, which challenged girls to believe that they have the power to change the world. In addition to these activities, the girls attended the Bloom Resource and Activity Fair and finally enjoyed a high-energy closing empowerment rally with a phenomenal motivational speaker, radio personality, T.L. Chisholm. So this was not just about a Saturday in February. Since the conference, Bloom Empowerment Clubs have been established in every middle school. What the girls said they appreciated most about the conference was the opportunity to share with their slightly older peers, like Ms. Ramirez. They were ecstatic to learn that the school-based Bloom sessions would be led by our high school and college student partners. Our Bloom team of high school, college, and community volunteers continues to collaborate to deliver a standard curriculum for all participants, which will include, in addition to the school-based sessions, cultural outings, college and career exploration, social entrepreneurship projects, and many, many other activities. Many of the eighth graders expressed concern that they would only be able to experience Bloom through the end of this year. In response, one of our amazing CNU student organization partners is now working with our department to design a new student organization at the high school level, which will be led by our eighth-grade Bloom participants as they move into the new, into high school. The new club, Flourish, get it, Bloom Flourish, will be piloted at Demby and Heritage High Schools in the fall. What a great opportunity this presents for our students. Next, I'd like to tell you about another student-led initiative. At a national conference last year, we attended a presentation led by a team of middle school students on Expect Respect, an intervention designed to equip students to combat harassment and bullying. The students who presented explained that the vast majority of their peers just don't know how to respond when faced with disrespect and bullying. They don't know what to do. Expect Respect provides students with a process for responding to harassment when it occurs. This student-led initiative is centered around a school-wide stop word that alerts everyone that a line has been crossed. For example, if a student were to say, Mary, that is an ugly shirt. Mary will say the recognized stop word, for example, enough. Everyone who hears the stop word must then follow the appropriate steps, including the student who was disrespectful. Teachers also have specific steps that they must perform to provide assurance to the offended student that the experience will be addressed. To launch the initiative, our citywide SCA and other high school student leaders trained nearly 130 middle school student leaders in December, who were subsequently, subsequently charged with organizing and leading the implementation in their own schools. Though each school is at a different stage of implementation, the student leaders in our middle schools have devised creative ways to integrate Expect Respect into their school cultures. They've not only trained their peers, but also led training for teachers and staff in their building. The student leaders at one school, Booker T. Washington, partnered with citywide SCA, Project Inclusion, and Students Against Destructive Decision members who attend Heritage High School to conduct grade-level assemblies, which included small group breakout sessions for the entire student body. This is just one more example of how our students are standing out as leaders and standing to, standing together to improve school culture in Newport News public schools. To conclude our presentation this evening, Tracy Pope will provide an update on yet another universal support available to all students restorative practices.
Thank you, Bridget.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Earlier this year, we presented our plan for implementation of restorative practices as part of our ongoing efforts to create a more caring and inclusive climate and environment for our students and staff. You will remember, we decided to begin our work in the middle school level. However, I'm delighted to let you know that we were able to include one of our high schools as well. Since that time, we have trained 37 administrators on the theory of restorative practices. Tonight, we are most excited to announce that we just last week, we completed our second round of training where school-based teams of eight members comprised of administrators, teachers, ISS coordinators, security officers, and professional school counselors from those same middle and high schools received 40 hours of intensive training. We learned not only the basic principles of restorative practices, but also how to lead proactive and responsive circles, how to actively listen, and how to serve as conflict mediators. At the conclusion of that training, we surveyed the participants. As you see on the slide before you, feedback was overwhelmingly positive. We also received comments such as, "I'm going to listen better to my students," and "start building stronger communities using proactive circles," as well as "use the mediation skills I have learned to help students in conflict." Another participant stated, "I'm going to implement these practices in my classroom and share the information with my colleagues." So as you can see, restorative practices is well on the move in Newport News public schools. Lastly, I would just like to say thank you for giving our team the opportunity this evening to present two proposed revisions to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and for allowing us to update you on some of the youth development initiatives. At this time, we would be glad to answer any questions you may have for us.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
So I see that there was a change in the code about the number of days that you can be long-term expelled from school. Is that going to have any impact on Enterprise Academy and what we do? Could I just like put that in the con, could you put that in the context of Enterprise Academy for me?
So the, I'll make sure I understand your question. The change from the long-term suspension was reduced from 364 to 45 as the max.
Yeah.
But there are also provisions that are put in there as well now. So for any student who is long-term suspended, then they would, if they were potentially sent to Enterprise Academy, the max would be for 45 days unless there were other circumstances that the new code, parts of the code allow for, which are weapons, drugs, serious bodily injury, in addition to being able to consider the student's discipline history.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Yeah, so great presentation and several questions along the lines of my colleague, Ms. Simons. So greater than 45 days, just so we get the vernacular down. So now we have short-term suspension, which is less than 10, 11 to 45 is long-term. So greater than 45 is what?
Greater than 45 is long-term.
Still, okay, just still just long-term.
Yes, sir. 300 and if a kid is expelled out of school, I mean, the, it is still expulsion. The only thing about it, you know, the law just came out, so we're, we're like tracking people down for other guidelines as well for to, I mean, we have been asking since everything was signed into law, but um, we, our, our practice here is to, we deal with the behavior, you know, of the student, but our goal too is to get the student back into learning as quickly as possible. And it may not look the same the first time, but our goal is to get the student back to learning as quickly as possible.
Okay. As you know, I'm big on having categories for tracking and being able to, I'm already thinking about how we analyze this, so having that additional category codified is something that I'm, I'm interested in. Going to the proposed Rule for Fighting Revision, I applaud, I applaud us making the, you know, having the flexibility to move forward. I think it was a great, it was a great implementation last year to reduce that, that fighting down. But now my concern, and I would say that I'm, I'm as equally concerned about absolute flexibility as I am about zero tolerance. So I'm old enough to remember that part of zero tolerance was to eliminate discrimination in sentencing. And it was promised, although it didn't, it didn't materialize, that if we had mandatory minimums, well now everybody gets the same treatment for the same offense and no one would be discriminated against. So I'm as concerned about this absolute flexibility as I am about zero tolerance. I'd like to see some, I'd like to see in terms of this revision, that there be guidelines for the administrators in terms of what is, what is an average, a min, and a max on various offenses and that there be something that they are following and that we have an ability to track who is giving disparate, because now we're, I think we're obligated now to track, if we're going to go down this road, we're obligated now to track who's giving disparate outcomes to students as opposed to who is excessively lenient, because that's, that's the, that is the other side of that coin. So I think I'd like to see some, some broad, you know, general categories of things in there as, as we look at this, this policy. The, the other is the cell phone policy, and I think that this is, this has become in our, in our digital age, just ten amount, of ten amount importance. And I appreciate that through conversations because we've had some, we've had some cell phone and cyberbullying problems that you all brought this to the forefront as a, as a revision to try to put some more teeth into. Essentially, the, the policy doesn't look like it's changed, but making the students more aware that this is, we're taking the cyberbullying very seriously. But I think in particular, either this or perhaps another policy would just be if you're documenting a fight, then we, then there's going to be, there's going to be a punishment level for that. There's, so there's, if you're recording a fight, because that's large, in my mind, those are the most egregious things that I've seen, the most egregious videos I've seen is student recording a fight and then putting that out on social media to then, then have the, the, the parties reliving that trauma over and over again. So that, if you're, so I would like to see a specific policy on recording of a fight having this consequence if a student is caught recording. So as opposed to, right now, this is more, just don't record in general, you know, at school, and I'd like to get more specific.
Anyone else?
Yes. Mr. Harris. Do you have a notification process for the parents prior to implementing the new guidelines?
So one thing, what we're planning to do is we're going to provide all the information to the schools of what our changes are going to be, but as far as our next steps, we are going to probably nail down those final decisions. When the book, when the book comes out, of course, it's going to be there for the parents to see it then. But as far as prior to that, we haven't planned anything for them as far as notification of the changes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just concerned about, you know, prior to, prior to the book coming out, you know, at least you have a head up that, you know, this is, this is coming, or what we call a warning order, you know? This, this would be implemented, so you have time not to, you know, educate your kid or whatever the case may be that this is coming. All right, prior to the book. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Visiting different, different schools in our city, I've noticed a lot of the youth gang prevention members, and I'll talk with them occasionally, Mr. Braun, other members of his team, have we seen a big decrease in crime having the youth gang prevention group in our school system?
You lean toward.
I was like, I'm going to defer to my superintendent.
And the drop, the, with any data points, what we have seen is increased communication and closing that gap between community and school. So if something happens in our community, this group really bridges that gap and says, you may want to know that on Saturday, there was an incident between this and that and be on the lookout. We're able to shift security, we're able to shift administrators. So I don't know as far as discipline, Jerome can answer to that better, but as far as being more prepared for community spilling in school, they've been an invaluable resource to us. They're one of the best resources that we have as far as an external partner, so.
And from a data point, today, we're still down about seven percent over last year from overall incidents in our division, so we're really happy about that.
Well, that's good because, you know, as I visit different schools every day, I just see the interaction between that group of, group of workers with the students, and I say, man, I wonder how much of our numbers are, have decreased since their partnership with the school system. So that's really great to know. Thank you.
Mr. Ashby.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for your report, and like, this is the second time I've really heard the restorative practices concept, which is really very good because it focuses on intrinsic and internal changing or motivation, which I think is really very, very good. Second thing is, at school, an elementary, an elementary school in another school district, this was shared with me, that two children were fighting and a third grader pulled out a cell phone and started to record the fighting. So instead of trying to break it up, went ahead and started recording it on, on their cell phone. One of the things I think that I would love to see us do from, from pre-K, you know, primary, elementary, is begin to share with children, and I was talking to the superintendent about this also, about the importance of even at that early age, of early education, but even at that early age, beginning to get children to understand social media, cell phone usage, what I do, how it affects somebody, you know, taking ownership and responsibility, you know, just in a developmental, I think it'd just be a good idea. Because I was just astonished of that, that a third grader would, would do that, you know, instead of like coming in and saying, well, let me see if I can break it up, or let me try to go get somebody to break it up. But that's the world that we live in now. And I think, you know, just to respond to that, again, I think what, what we're seeing is excellent. I think the last thing I would say or share too is, and I shared this last year, and all, all what we've heard about youth development is just simply phenomenal. But just to go back, there is something called We Dine Together, and CBS Evening News did it maybe not about a year, year and a half ago, I know they did a piece on it again, but it was really, really very, very good. But it was focused on children that are in the cafeteria sitting by themselves, that there was a group of, of, a group of children that, that formed a We Dine Together Club, and they would go to those children that were sitting by themselves, maybe had physical disabilities, maybe just came to school for the new time, and they would go ahead and invite them in to their group, and it was really, really very, very good. And as you saw them get connected and belong, you saw their self-confidence, it improved their grades, all those type of things happened. So it's just a wonderful program, just something to, to think about. But again, just thank you so very much for the work and what you're doing for our children.
Okay. Anyone else? Thanks again for that wonderful report, and we're going to move on. So next on the agenda, we have our six point oh three is our membership report, and six point oh four, attendance report, six point oh five, construction report, and six point oh six. I don't think those were in your package. We'll then move on to item six point oh six, comments from our acting superintendent, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. I want to thank our employees and community members for their support of our budget and the proposed salary increase. I did attend both sessions last week, and I was really taken by the activists. We talk in Newport News about college, career, and citizen-ready. Our staff showed citizen-ready loud and clear, so I want to thank you for that. We're going to continue to reach out to the city council to ensure that our school division has those financial resources to prepare our kids to be college, career, and citizen-ready. I met with the city manager last Friday. We have another meeting coming up this Friday. We're going to continue to build that bridge and make things happen for our community. It's what our kids deserve, it's what our families deserve. I want to let you know, and this just happened this morning, Newport News Public Schools has again earned a Certificate of Excellence, Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our FY 2017 Comprehensive Financial Report. I'm not sure if it's quite like Menchfield with the decade of dominance, but we winning this award almost every year, or every year in my tenure. This award is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association. It recognizes government entities that demonstrate a spirit of full disclosure, that's disclosure, that's how you win the award, to clearly communicate its financial story. And I thought in this time, in these interesting times that we're in, to receive this award today, it was like, oh, you've got to talk about this because it's really about full disclosure. And we'll continue to do that and clearly communicate our financial story. Special thanks and congratulations to our business office for their great Special thanks and congratulations to our business office for their great work. We really appreciate everything they do, we couldn't run this school system without them. This is Student Leadership Week, and you know, student leadership is a huge priority in Newport News Public Schools. It was a very busy Saturday in our community, and I won't steal Sophia's comments, but on Student Leadership Week, I do wanna thank Sophia for her leadership in the, in the high school expo, which we put on at Patrick Henry Mall. So if you happened to be at Patrick Henry Mall on Saturday, you saw us in action and for showing college career and citizen ready, but thank you, Sophia, for your leadership in that. Also on Saturday, we had the three Newport News Odyssey of the Mind teams earn top honors at the state competition. They're gonna advance to the world finals. We don't just compete locally, we don't compete at the state, we go against the world, or with the world, or whatever the term may be. We compete with anybody. You saw a national award earlier today. We have three, three teams going to Iowa. I don't know that I would pick Iowa for world competition, but that's where they're going. It's Achievable Dream Academy, so in elementary schools, their first time ever advanced into world, so proud of them. Woodside won, Achievable Dream and Woodside won first place in their division, and Ward earned a creativity award, which is almost like a golden ticket in Willy Wonka, you go straight to the world finals. We had six teams make it to state, five of the six placed in the top three, or won an award like the creativity award. You can't touch that. Our kids are amazing, and they showed that creativity and innovation, and unbelievably proud of them. This is the first time in our history that we've had three Odyssey of the Mind teams advance to world competition. So congratulations to all our Odyssey of Mind teams. So fast forward to this weekend, Saturday, we have a lot going on too. I'm gonna host in partnership with our family engagement specialists, our second Family Resource Forum. You may know that last month, we did our first Family Resource Forum, we had over 250 people attend. And in that Family Resource Forum, the first part is an opportunity to sit down and have lunch with the superintendent and other members of staff and talk about your hopes and dreams for our community. So it's a real fun way to get at what would you like to see this next year and future years get at. So we get a lot of great information from that. The second hour is all about resources for families. We partner with the Mobile Food Pantry, we partner with Organizations for School Supplies, so you can come and get a lot of groceries, backpack full of school supplies for every kid that you bring, hygiene kits and clothing. So it's a full service, two hours, and it's a great opportunity to connect with community outside the school walls. 250, the first time, this time will be at South Morrison, and we anticipate breaking that record, so we'll keep updating, updating you on that. So that's what's been going on this weekend, what's moving on ahead. Thank you for everything you do for our city.
Well, moving on with the agenda, item number seven, are there any cards? Wow, there being none. We'll move to item number eight, matters by the school board. And first up, we'll have Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you. So I wanna start out by saying thank you so much to Ms. Adams and her colleagues for that presentation, because I, as she mentioned, I have a little bit of personal experience with one of them. They all seem like very promising initiatives to me, but I wanna speak personally on the Bloom Conference and the initiative to create the clubs in the schools. I think that that's one of the most valuable initiatives we have going on in middle schools right now. The ability to create a club and to create an initiative that encourages female empowerment is something that was never available to me, and something that I never, I, I know that it was encouraged because I saw it on TV and I saw it in media, but I never had someone firsthand walk up to me and say, you know, like, you, you know, you're a girl and you can go out for that president position, it's not just the guys, because especially in middle school, when you're kind of in like that awkward puberty stage, you don't have that self-confidence in yourself, you don't have that self-esteem and thinking like, maybe I can do it, and then definitely like all the kind of the gender roles, especially in middle school, don't help that perception. So I think that just starting really early, especially in that really important stage of our lives, where we're really starting to figure out who we are, is an incredibly valuable thing, and I'm just really, really happy that we're doing that. I know that it would've been a tremendous help to me, and I'm sure that will be a tremendous help to a lot of our female students, so I really appreciate that. I'd also like to say, as Mr. Nichols touched on, this weekend, we had a lot of opportunities for the public and for prospective students to get to know some of our Newport News Public High Schools, and not just this weekend, this past week or two. We had our freshman welcome night, that was actually a little while ago, but it enabled freshmen, incoming freshmen to come and tour their schools and to meet their teachers and just sort of see some of the things their school has to offer to get excited about high school. That's a really great thing. I've always, ever since doing it, ever since kind of experiencing it, I really enjoyed that sort of like celebration of our high school and celebration of the things we have to offer, and I've participated in it. It really is a wonderful time for students to have, and I think that a lot of prospective students got the chance to enjoy that and see what their high school is going to offer them once they get there. The other thing is the Sage Expo, Student Advisory Group on Education Expo that took place at Patrick Henry Mall this past weekend. It was amazing. Some of the musical performances were some of the best that I've ever seen as a Newport News Public School student, and I think that this expo is really important, because it allows the public to engage, especially in terms of like the musical performances, whereas normally, maybe you would never see that stuff unless you're a parent of a student or unless you're involved in the school in some way. So if you haven't been, we have them every year, they're wonderful, I really encourage you guys to go out, because just this past weekend, I think the general public got a chance to sort of see the stuff that we've been doing and see just how accomplished and how talented our students are. It was really a wonderful, a wonderful event, I believe. And then last thing I have to say, because now it's been a really long meeting, my student, my predecessor, the next student representative to the school board, will be elected next month at the Student Advisory Group on Education meeting. The election process, as I touched on last time, each student gets the nomination from their school, and then they will attend a Sage meeting, like I said, next month, where the Student Advisory Group on Education will vote from the nominees from each school. So there'll be five nominees, they'll each give a little presentation about themselves, and then they will vote the new student representative to the school board in. So looking forward to that, and hope you all have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stotger.
So I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your open explanation tonight, and I wanna thank the folks who came and commented in terms of supporting moving ahead. You know, I do believe that our selection process, our interviews, our presentations with candidates moved along very productively, and that we're at a point where we should be able to find and select a really strong candidate. We have a good group to choose from, I, I know that, and I can represent that. It bothers me, though, that we don't have, you know, really many answers to things that were breached and occurred over this process, and that there is apparently a lax attitude about it in terms of keeping confidentiality. At this point in time, I really believe that the V S B A and our attorneys should really confer to determine if there are any pending legal issues that, that could be a problem in this process. You know, it's not enough to just settle for one opinion about how we proceed. It should be convincing to this board in its majority, it should be convincing to the community, and it should be convincing beyond just what's been discussed tonight. I support the qualifications that we adopted. I wasn't present when those were voted in, in terms of applicant criteria, and I think they represent fairly what we should be looking for in a superintendent. Although I don't believe that it's really incumbent on us to prevent board members from using their judgment about applicants. This board, like other deliberative bodies, needs to be able to look beyond just a series of boxes on an application and move on to the subtle, important characteristics of the next superintendent we're gonna get. We need to look at vision, we need to look at passion, we need to look at what motivates them. I can tell you that this board did a really good job of that, and I have a lot of confidence in, in where they've arrived at this point. As I said, we have a good group of candidates, but it's not about checking boxes or putting an X in a box and turning off the judgment when you make the final decision. And I'm worried that, I'm worried that this, this group make the right decision. I do support moving ahead, we have really good candidates, let's don't blow it.
Thank you, Stotger. We will go, we'll go with the silence.
I also want to thank everyone who came out this evening. I felt like you gave really well-thought-out feedback, and that the attitude of kind of encouraging us and telling us that we can do it and move ahead, and, and I just, I, I was really, really pleased with, with the, the feedback that we got tonight. And I, I also, you know, I, I made a, made a vote to vote for the candidate qualifications, and, and I have to stand by that vote, and I recognize that. So I think we can move forward, I think it's really important for us as a board to listen to each other and to try to move forward in a positive way, and, you know, not, not try to do any power plays at this point, because clearly, we, we can get this done, we do have great candidates. I, I have, I have faith in, in our chair, Gary, he did a very good job presenting tonight, so I know we can do this and move forward together, and I'm really optimistic. I just wanna finish by saying, I was very proud to receive with my board the Magna Award grand prize for the entire United States of America for our work that we did with, you know, ESL students, refugee families that came into our community really rather suddenly a few years ago. And it just shows you what an innovative school system we have, because our senior staff and our teachers saw a problem, they saw it coming, and they responded in a loving, competent way that empowered families to adjust and got, got our students, did the best thing for children. So, you know, I, I do think this, this is the second national award the school board has won. So we, we really have a lot to be grateful for as a board, we've accomplished so much, two Magna Awards since I've been on the board in 2012, it's amazing. And it's because we empower our senior administration to, to get things done. And I know that we can continue to do that, and we can continue to move forward in, in a positive way. So thank you, everybody.
Mr. Ely.
Thank you. I just wanna like, Shelly, thank everybody for coming out tonight, it was definitely a, a great meeting, and I definitely took everybody's feedback in. It was really good, we all come together to discuss these matters of what you want as the community. I also had the opportunity to attend Patrick Henry this weekend for the expo. It was amazing. If you didn't come, you missed out on a good treat. To see the different schools from all across Newport News participate and show their talent in the arts was just unbelievable. Also, like Shelly was saying with the ESL award, it felt so good, it's thousands and thousands of people in San Antonio, and you have the little badge on it that says Newport News, and people come up, you're from Newport News, can I get a picture? Which I'm like, oh my gosh, this is amazing. So it felt so good for us as a school district and a school board to receive that award over 90,000 school districts across the United States, for Newport News to be number one, so it felt really, really good. And then senior staff, teachers, support staff, thank you, thank you, made us feel really good as a board. Also this weekend, I'm doing my third annual I count youth pep rally at Doris Miller Community Center. It's from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Last year, we had over 400 youth come out, we have dancers, step teams, choirs, band, free food, and we also have a team formed with it too. So we give the opportunity for the youth in the community to kind of discuss and see what they want, which way, which direction they want the city to go in, and their concerns of the youth. So if you have children, make sure you bring them out to Doris Miller Community Center, it's this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and it's free food as well. I also, we're visiting different schools today, visiting Heritage High School, I'd like to say congratulations to Joanne Spoh, she's the employee of the year, she's, she's the security guard there. Is that for not, security guard?
Security officer.
Security officer. She's the security officer there, and she's definitely proud, and I'm very proud that she received that award. Also, I was at Deer Park, and Mrs. Stephanie Tillsdale, she's the teacher of the year, so congratulations to her. And also Mr. Terry Finner at Denby High School, he's the teacher of the year. So keep it up, teachers, and all other teachers across the district that got teacher of the year, and all other teachers, y'all all teacher of the year in my book. Keep up the good work, and I look forward to working with this amazing board and the citizens of Newport News to keep our district in the right direction. Thank y'all, and have a blessed night.
Thank you, Mr. Ely, Mr. Brown.
All right. Well, I'll be at Patrick Henry this weekend for the Youth Volunteer Corps, their can structure contest, and that should be a really exciting engineering feat. We talk about giving kids an opportunity to compete, to have competition academically, and that's one of a feature event that our Newport News Public Schools, we do a great job of representing ourselves well in that can structure competition. And so I'll be there, and I hope that you all have an opportunity to come out and, and see the various can structures that our, our kids put together, as well as it, all the food goes to a great cause, it goes to families that are hungry in our community. I, as, as I've been this year, I'm focused still on the budget, and I wanna thank Ms. Rousseau for giving us a great presentation tonight. I, I think that you clarified a lot of questions and issues that we, that we see, that we've seen. It is surprising to me for, we did have, it is surprising for us to have our city make a, such a deal about attrition when they've been using the same practice themselves, and did not include that themselves in their own presentation. So that was surprising and eye-opening for me as well. I appreciate you clarifying the, the questions surrounding the amount of money that's available at the end of year and whether or not it could have been used for critical capital projects and the, the thought process that goes into that. Myself, as a board member, I'm not in the business of setting people up, setting staff up to be laid off, and so that is a dumb thing to do in your budget, to use end-of-year funding to provide something that is a one-time expenditure that you cannot provide the following year, and that's just not leadership. And so for, for the, for, for the city to apply, apply that kind of pressure, that kind of thinking to us, that is irresponsible, in my, in my opinion. And I, and I've said that, and that's why I wanna make that stated for the record out here tonight. But as well, Mr. Chairman, I've spoken with members of council, I don't want you all to think, I know people have come away thinking that there's some contention. I have spoken with just about every member of council this week, had conversations with them. We have a good cordial relationship, we do talk, and Mr. Chairman, I am still expecting our joint meeting to happen, I believe, hopefully sometime this week, like we discussed earlier today. All right, so I have commitments from council members that they would like to have a joint session, and so I'm expecting, Mr. Chairman, that we will get that joint session, because the budget is, these raises are important to me, I'm not, like I've said, I've been fighting for this all year, I'm never gonna let this go, like a, like a woodpecker with a headache on this, on these raises. We are gonna get this, we're gonna do this, this 4% raise, and, and, and I'm bound and determined that, that we can find a way to make it happen. I was very encouraged tonight as well to see, because that was one of the things that we wanted, to see agreement between the numbers that are used. We're, I see that both city manager staff and our staff are using the same set of numbers in terms of the presentations that were, that were shown tonight, and I think that that agreement is, is, is what is needed. We just come to different conclusions, right? And we are a body as a, as a board, under the Virginia Constitution, we're sovereign to make our own managerial decisions as to how to, how to best take care of the division, spend the money, and others simply cannot Monday morning quarterback our budget and our budgeting practices. And if, if we can get to a spirit of mutual respect in terms of that, in terms of the stopping the Monday morning quarterbacking, then I think that we will be in a place to make that compromise. And then as well, tonight, you all stayed until the end. I think this is the most folks we've ever seen stay until the end, so you are great, great group of citizens to stay and show this much interest in public education, I really sincerely appreciate it. That's how we win the Magna Award. Two years, we've won it twice since I've been on the school board, so in my term, in just four years, I'm gonna brag, we got it twice. And we really are, there's no exaggeration, a really class division in the entire country. We go to the National School Board Conference, and other school divisions come up to us and they know Newport, oh, you're Newport News, oh, we heard about you. Oh, you guys do great things over there. So it is no exaggeration, I really wanna... I really want to compliment the senior staff on the great job that you're doing. And that's part of why I'm fighting so hard for this 4% raise, and I'm not going to let it go. And we are going to go after Huntington next. As soon as we finish up this operating budget, we're going to focus on rebuilding Huntington. That's, that is, that is going to be job number one. Job number one, number two, and number three in the capital budget. All right? So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll give you some time, give you some time back.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Vice Chair, Mr. Ashby.
Good evening. I do know it's, it's late, and I, we'll have comments now. Somebody is saying we're going to have a vote a little bit later on. First of all, I'd like to, to really acknowledge our two early childhood students from Denby Early Childhood Center, which I think was phenomenal. You've already heard about what's called the Magna Award, and it was, that was just phenomenal. And just the innovation, the pre-activeness and the proactiveness in reference to recognizing that that is a need. Over 55 languages spoken in Newport News Public Schools. So that was key and critical. This afternoon, Ms. Simons and I were at Warwick High School and got to really see some phenomenal things. The Secretary of Education was there, which was impressive. But what's really impressive, impressive, were the students that were talking and sharing and describing what they were doing in that situation and setting. The Secretary of Education was, I mean, just totally, totally impressed with the students' language, their vocabulary, what they were saying and sharing. It was just really, really, really very, very powerful. To address Huntington Middle School, couple things there. One is, and I've, I've talked to the superintendent in my one-on-ones, but we are beginning to look at going ahead and drafting and putting together a Huntington Middle School. I got a call from a very significant Huntington alumni member about a week and a half ago, and he said to me, "Mr. Ashby, on Facebook, it says that the school system sold the property of Huntington Middle School." So all these, so, and I'm just like, I said, "Excuse me, sir," and that's what he said. So of course I called Mr. Nichols right away. He's like, "Come, what are you talking about?" But those are the type of things that are out there. This school system has a plan, beginning to design, of Huntington Middle School. And we cannot be clearer or more evident than, than that. So again, I'm sorry that rumors and innuendos are flying around, but that is the plan as, as far as that's concerned. Something else that was shared tonight that I want to bring some concern to, it was concern in comments about accreditation, and how many schools we presently have accredited. Then it was shared that before, we had all of our schools accredited. For two consecutive years, we had all of our schools fully, fully accredited. What wound up happening, though, which was really good, was that the state went ahead and changed the test. It went from memorization and application to more comprehensive cognitive, metacognitive skills, which are needed for the 21st century child and for our children to be successful. So when the test was changed, we had to change the way in which our educators taught our children. So the phenomenal thing in this situation and setting is, we are teaching our children differently to be successful in the 21st century. According to what has been shared with me, again, by the acting superintendent, that it looks like we're going from 21 to either 26 or 27 schools that will be fully accredited next time. So we are moving forward in reference to that. Accreditation is important, but teaching and developing the whole child is even more, more important. The academic success, yes, but that social developmental, emotional, and spiritual growth of children, and when I'm talking about spiritual, I'm not talking about religion. I'm talking about self-esteem, self-awareness, really developing the whole child. So self-confidence in those, in those situations are set there. So we applaud that. The school system is moving. Best practices have been placed, have been put in place. I love what has happened in reference to what's happening in youth development and situations and settings like that. That's what this is about. This is about the success of children. So, Mr. Chair, at this time, I would terminate my comments for this.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep this pretty simple and to the point. I'm going to rescind my statement to make a motion based off the comments that the chairman has stated his timeline based off of the statements that I hear from some board members that I knew that was probably opposed to, to the process, or whatever the case may be. And I'm doing that because, you know, building trust, ensuring that the school board keeps its integrity intact. We've heard from the public. I think all our board members understand where we must go from here. So if there's any other conversations you hear, you know, as far as any other issues, and I think everyone has clearly heard it and seen it from everybody. My, my young brother often reminds me that when we was young, you know, back then you played sunlight football and basketball, and you had to pick people, you know? And I never picked them, picked my younger brother to play on the team. And for a long time, he held that against me, and we were just joking about it a couple days ago. And I said, "Well, you know, you really just wasn't that good at that age." And he said, "Yeah, you're right." You know, I finally realized that I wasn't. And I didn't pick him because I was my brother. I picked him because I know he really couldn't play. And so I said, "Well, if the table was turned, would you pick me now?" He said, "No, because I'm, you're older than I am, and I'm faster than you are, and you're probably not as good as you used to be," which is, which is the truth. At the end of the day, we should move forward based off of collective group of people on what this school board actually needs. Not just from the public with comments, but the bottom line, actually what we know. And sometimes we must get out, get out of our comfort zone and find the best people, whether administratively or whatever the case may be, to lead this school system. Okay? So, Mr. Chairman, I yield my time back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'm here between me and filing my taxes on time. So anyway, there's great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. And so tonight, I want to thank each and every one who came out. Tonight, as sometimes you hear, you know, we didn't give you eyesight today. I gave you an insight of our superintendent process. That eyesight gave you an insight. And by no means, I hope I didn't mean to be confrontational. I hope that what I said was educational. And that I know each one of us have our own opinions, but tonight I gave you the facts. This is where we are. I take my job as the chair very, very, very seriously. And so I think the school system provided me an opportunity to attend the National School Board Association meeting in San Antonio. And at those things, you have multiple of breakout sessions. I would tell you that I've got credit for about 12.4, 12.5 hours of things I've gone to. I went to every, every last session that dealt with superintendent search. I thought I was obligated to do that. We had to get this right. And I want to arm myself as the chair with every question that would possibly come up. One of those questions came up because I answered it. Yes, we got, we got a letter. And that's where I got that term from. They says, yes, though not frequent, but definitely not unusual, that these letters come up. Because most of us never hired anyone of that. And, you know, we have loose lips. I would assure, I know we have some school board members here today would like to have us something in formal writing from the V S B A to assure that the process is not tainted in any way or any form, that we could move forward. I will check with our legal, and I will give them a call. They wanted to have a representative here tonight. I would have gave them an opportunity to confirm that in person. We did have a email, and I did speak with them today and to prepare myself for tonight. So I, I read that statement. Our next step that we would do is, if my school board members are an ingredient, and I read that statement, do I need to read again?
No, it's not about, it's an announcement.
Okay, I just read that announcement. And what I would like to do with those candidates that are qualified, as we here agree again, that if each board member will go through their notes, if you don't have your notes, I may have them, you can call me up, I would rank your, these, your top three in order of preference, along with comments. Send those to the chair and the vice chair, both. We will then get them together, and then we'll send them out to everyone. And so you can look at everyone's comments, and then we'll get with the, I'll get with the clerk of, of school board here to try to set our next meeting where we can have some true discussion on how to move forward. But as Mr. Stodger said, we do have great candidates. There are some great candidates. And if you, I got smarter just listening to them. And that's really all I've got to say. I hope that we've kind of cleared the air. This board has been intact since I've been on it. As Mr. Brown said, this is my fourth year. We have two Magna Awards under our belt. This board is strong, you know? We, we will pull together as one unit, and no matter how we vote, three to four, four to three, whatever the case may be, it's the board vote. It's always the board's vote at the end. Because the board only can have one vote. We have seven parts, but one vote. So I hope that, again, didn't want to be confrontational tonight. I hope this was very educational, and I hope that the public themselves got a real understanding of how superintendent processes are. You can see that they're, they will pull you apart, but in the end, they'll make us stronger. And that being said, I'm, if there's nothing else tonight.
I do, Mr. Chairman, just quickly though, sir. I just wanted to, because I thought there was going to be something shared by Mr. Harris, I just wanted to make sure that it's shared and expressed, because it was shared with, with Mr. Eli and me that we are accountable. And I just have to share and express, I am accountable. I'm accountable to the children of Newport News Public Schools. I never look at things as far as political. I never look at things as far as votes are concerned. I never, ever look at things as what's right, or seeking endorsements, or anything like that. In my 40 years of working with children, particularly children that come from Title I schools that are low socioeconomic, I will always, always put children first. That is what I was called to do, and that is what I will consistently and constantly do through the superintendent process. As I go and visit schools, I will always do what's best for children. Politics, education, and children do not mix. They don't. I will always put children first. Elected, if I get reelected, great. If I don't, but I will still do things for children. And I just want to go in the record for that. So let me, thank you so much for allowing me to say that.
Okay. Are there any other issues or concerns in front of the board? I consider this meeting adjourned.